All right. Good evening, everyone. My name, I'm Heidi Harmon, Mayor of San Luis Obispo, and I'd like to call the special meeting and regular meeting of the City Council to order and state that all council members are present for the conferencing. And the first item before us is to receive an update from the Emergency Services Services Director and affirm, modify, or repeal the Emergency Services Director Proclamation dated July 17, 2020, authorizing the funding of certain projects and the purchase of certain equipment, supplies, and services outside of regular purchasing. So would Emergency Services Director Derek Johnson please present the report?
Great. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. So I have a brief recommendation tonight, which is to receive an update on the Emergency Services Director and affirm the proclamation number four. I won't go into great details about the current status of the pandemic. I think we're providing daily updates either through the Emergency Operations Centers or when the governor holds press conferences or the county holds press conferences, providing those notes directly to the City Council. So next slide. So background, Section 2.24 of the municipal code does empower the Emergency Services Director to issue rules and regulations. And then back on March 17th, that was followed up by the City Council, which proclaimed a local emergency regarding the pandemic. Next slide. On July 13th, which was sudden, it was last, I believe, Monday afternoon, Governor Newsom directed that certain businesses within certain counties, including San Luis Obispo, had to either close or restrict operations. And the unique aspect of this particular order was that there was no projected date of when these restrictions may end. And so the businesses that were impacted were, the list that showed up here on the screen, I won't read them in detail, but as the council knows, as we've been sending updates, we've been getting further updates and clarifications from the state. And our team has tried to quickly adapt and adjust to make sure that many of these businesses could stay open. I would say on the afternoon of the 13th, I received multiple calls from businesses saying that, hey, I'm not going to be able to keep my people employed. You know, I can't afford to start, stop. And so therefore, you know, what can you do? And as many of you know, our staff quickly reacted. And by Tuesday morning, we had water barricades and we had secured K-Rail in the downtown to really allow for businesses to expand out into the public right away. Next slide. So as part of the proclamation issued last week and talking with our Public Works Director, Matt Horn, and after consulting with the city attorney, one of the areas that ultimately was a barrier for us was really about the, the public bidding process for goods, services, and particularly the delivery of public improvements. And so based upon that feedback in terms of that, because timeliness was ultimately a big issue for what we were hearing from businesses issued last week, an order allowing us to expedite purchasing specifically for the purposes of delivering, delivering the parklets. This is something that we felt we needed to be able to advance that work quickly. And we've continued to do that with, I think, some great success. And in talking with our Public Works Director today, he reinforced that this action was really a way for us to be able to liberate the staff, to be able to deliver in a timeframe that's needed to support our business community, the parklets in downtown. Next slide. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions. And again, the recommendation is just to receive an update and then affirm the Emergency Services Director Proclamation number four.
Thank you so much, Derek. I know we've had a lot of conversations with folks downtown and I appreciate the flexibility and the speed of the staff really making the parklets happen and adjusting to street closures versus not street closures and all of that. I think it's been a really robust and really great process. Can you speak just briefly or maybe just let folks know in the wellness, fitness community, if they're interested in bringing their business outside and utilizing some of our spaces and other ideas? What is the best way for them to connect with the city to get the best up-to-date information on how to keep their business alive?
Yep. Great question. So just let me just take a minute. And, you know, we haven't, we're in the process or have installed 26 parklets in the downtown. And so we have, as the rules have changed for particularly barbers and hairstylists and for gyms, you know, we want to make sure we're affording them the same opportunities. So our amazing Parks and Rec staff have quickly adapted. And they put together a program to be able to allow for gyms to be able to use our parks, whether it's Mitchell Park, Meadow Park, any of the parks in the downtown, to be able to use those spaces and activate those spaces for, so that people can recreate. So Greg Avakeen, our Parks and Rec Director is the first point of contact. Let me pull up the website real quick. My apologies, I don't have it right at my disposal. But Lee Johnson is kind of, is, who's our inner economic development manager. If you go to the slowcity.org and you go to the COVID-19 page, you can find a list of business resources as a whole section on OpenSlow. The best way to get assistance and the quickest way is to call our hotline at 805-783-7835. And you can learn more about, talk directly with Lee or his staff about how to activate those spaces. Also, we've set up a dedicated email address, openslow@slowcity.org. And that's a way to connect with the entire team. And so make sure the entire team can get that information and get back to people right away.
Okay, great. So any business, is that business specific then? Anyone that has a question about how to operate under COVID is at openslow@slowcity.org?
That's correct. Yeah, well, it's really, that's around the parklets. But the Business and Community Hotline is the 805-783-7835. That's the real way to, you know, get the general questions.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Looking to my colleagues to see if they have any questions. Councilmember Pease?
Not a question, just ongoing appreciation for the great work of the city, but also the way the community has continued to reach out, partner, come up with the creative ideas. I love hearing about all the, that you were starting to mention, Mayor Harmon, of the gyms that are utilizing the parks and just all kinds of terrific ways to match resources with opportunities. So, so thank you to, to both the city and the community and the business owners and the community for coming out and supporting the businesses. It's so important, just obviously monetarily, but I think psychically, you know, for good psyche as well. So, thank you.
Absolutely. 100%. I had a meeting today with some of the owners of wellness businesses here. And Derek, one of their concerns or noticing scenes was that their clients are afraid to work out outside. So it might be helpful to consider getting some information out there to the community that's obviously fact and database around the science about if you're physically distant and all of that. If we could, you know, just kind of support the general idea of getting out and getting exercise in general, that might be helpful for folks to start understanding the difference between, you know, being inside with a bunch of folks without masks in an enclosed space as opposed to being outside with folks at a physical distance, that these are very different environments and that keeping up people's wellness is so key. I mean, so much of COVID obviously has been, and it really brought to light the importance of health and wellness. And so it would be a shame, not only from a business and economic perspective on the part of the business owners, but on the part of the community at, at large, to lose their wellness because the studios that they've been attending are folding or they don't feel comfortable going outside to join them. So there, I think there's a huge opportunity there for us to do maybe a little bit more amplification of the data around exercises outside at a, at a safe distance that we might consider taking on in terms of our messaging and social media.
Great idea. We're happy to reach out to, you know, the county public health and see if there's any authority, authoritative sources that we can look to to make sure we're getting factual, science-based information out there about, you know, what that risk profile looks like. We know that Dr. Bornstein has been supportive of making sure that people are out, being active, engaging in appropriate social contact and exercising. So we'll see what we can do to get that information out there. We just want to be really supportive of the businesses. And, you know, one of the things we've heard is that, you know, the city over the last, you know, few years has developed a fairly robust social media presence. People are trusting us. And so we can use that trust, us using our voice as a trusted source, get information out there that's factual, so people can make their own personal decisions.
That sounds great, Derek. And can you clarify, and if you don't have this up right now, maybe we can follow up at the end of the meeting. In terms of the outdoor haircuts, does that have to be in the adjacent outdoor space associated with the business? Or I'm hearing a lot of people say they're considering calling their stylist and having them come over to their home and do it. Is that allowed? Or what, what's this kind of the, maybe the nuance there in terms of what's allowed under this new situation here in terms of that particular piece?
You know, that great question. I don't know the exact details of what, how the cosmetology rules have been adjusted, which are, you know, regulated particularly under public health. But we're happy to follow up those details. I, I think the overall recommendation is for if hairstylists and salons are confused about the rules, call that business hotline. We have a great rapport with County Public Health and our liaisons over at the County EOC, who have been very, very supportive. And we can get those kind of detailed questions and back to the, to the community or to the public if they're interested in having a hairstylist come by their house.
Okay.
My, my understanding, Christine, my understanding as of yesterday was that that was not yet allowed, but as Derek said, we can follow up on that.
Okay. Yeah, that might be helpful because it, I think, you know, it's kind of shifting into that sort of feeling and would not want, and also just curious, like, what are the ramifications? We don't want anybody losing their license because they're trying to accommodate their clients and, you know, make people's lives better. So it would be, yeah, maybe we can get some communication about that. So people know what, with clarity, what's going on there. That would be helpful. So, thank you. I don't see any other questions. City Clerk, do we have any public comment?
No, we do not.
Okay. Would, would someone like to make a motion then?
I'll move the recommendations to affirm the Emergency Services Director Proclamation number four.
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Harmon?
Yes. And with that, it passes 5-0. We will continue on with Derek Johnson to move us to the business item to approve the allocation of $566,600, wait, some CARES Act funding. Let's go with that.
Thanks, Madam Mayor and members of the council. I appreciate the opportunity to present this item. And I think early on, I think it was day one during the pandemic, that I think I mentioned that, you know, part of the decision-making is going to be a little bit different than I think we're used, used to in the city of San Luis Obispo. And so while we're trying to err on the side of making decisions and providing support to our, our community. And so tonight's recommendation is one that has not received the typical thorough vetting. You know, we didn't go to the HRC, we didn't go to any advisory bodies. We had a typical, we had a very short timeframe in which to bring this to the City Council. And that's largely because it's being driven by some deadlines with the state of California to essentially, you know, expend the funds by October 30th of 2020. And so the recommendation tonight is, you know, fairly straightforward. There's four areas in which the Finance Director would allocate the $566,680 in CARES Act funding to homeless programs, to augment the budget for OpenSlow Parklets, for small business grant programs, and then reimburse the city for COVID-19 expenses. So next slide. So the background is, we did apply to, for the city to receive the proportional allocation of $500 million for CARES Act funding. And I do want to thank the mayor and the City Council for being part of the advocacy effort with the state of California and the governor's office. As I mentioned before, we have to expend these funds by October 30th, 2020. And for eligible expenses incurred, starting back, and so it's backdated to March 1st, 2020. And I, I mentioned in the, in the recommendation, the, our proportional share is 566,680. If you recall from the original discussions, it looked like early on that small counties and small cities, like the city of San Luis Obispo, were not going to receive any funding whatsoever. And so we were able, through a lot of effort through the League of California Cities, to push both the Assembly, the Senate, and the governor ultimately include a proportional amount of funding for small cities that's based on a per capita basis. Next slide. So applicable uses, I won't read these in detail. They were included in the memoranda that was issued to you. They range from public safety, social distancing guidelines in public facilities, state and local public health, including testing, vulnerable populations, K through 12, and other items. And I think in item number six, I provided some more detail based upon a circular that was provided by the County Association or California Association of Counties. Next slide. And so our recommendation tonight is based upon our, you know, my best professional recommendation is where we see gaps and where we need to see the support is $30,000 in homeless parking programs. Specifically, we've worked with the county of San Luis Obispo to augment the program at 40 Prado. This is our effort right now to try to fill the gap after the program was closed at the Vets Hall. And our staff is going to work within the timeframe to see what we can do, potentially partner to either even further backfill that. There's some other options that we're looking at specifically, whether it's for just homeless services in general. We know we need some more support for OpenSlow Parklets. If you'll recall, the, the council as part of the 2021 budget allocated $200,000 a part of the authority that was granted to staff back in March of this year with the $6 million in one-time funds. We've released an additional $100,000. We think most likely, based upon the trajectory and the demand of parklets throughout the downtown and the greater San Luis Obispo, that we might need, you know, much more funding than that. So our recommendation is additional $100,000. We've seen examples in other cities, specifically Grover Beach, Navajo, and some other city, in bigger cities throughout California, that have provided some small grants. I don't, let me see if Bob Hill is on the line. I don't, let's see if I see him on there. I do see him on there. He's been having some conversations with Heidi McPherson today over at the Slow County Foundation to see if there's opportunities for us to create some synergy with some of the work that they're doing. And then last but not least is to reimburse the city for non-budgeted city COVID costs. They can be mentioned in the staff report that it's, you know, nearly half a million dollars of non-budgeted costs. We do believe that ultimately we'll be eligible for some form of reimbursement under the Stafford Act, which the, which President Trump enacted back, I believe, on March 11th or 12th of this year. We've submitted a claim to FEMA for our costs of over about $2.4 million. But it's unsure the funding source for that reimbursement and how that's going to happen and when it's going to happen. I have some, you know, reservations just about that commitment, given that if we're a small city of 50,000 and we've incurred $2.4 million worth of costs, what are all the other cities and counties across the United States? What have they incurred and whether or not there's the actual funding to make good on that pledge back in March? So with that, Madam Mayor, I'll turn it back to you. If there's any questions for myself. And then Bob can also provide an update in his conversations with Ms. McPherson at the Slow County Foundation.
Great. Thank you so much. I know I had a great conversation with Heidi, the other Heidi, which is probably what she calls me also, about all of the great work that I think a lot of the community may not know that's going on behind the scenes. A lot of partnership, a lot of great things, I think, that are ruminating, that are about to kind of come forth. So that's exciting to hear that. Derek, I know you and I talked, I think, today about the concern in the downtown about folks that are unsheltered, cleaning the streets, all of that. Is this the right place, my understanding, is this the right place to talk about that? Can you let us know a little bit more about what's going on there? What needs to happen there and what we're going to do about it and what the gaps might be still?
Yeah. Great question, Madam Mayor. So if you recall, last year downtown Slow was entertaining potentially a contract for a, a social enterprise program to employ homeless individuals, to take an active role in being both relationship to other homeless individuals and cleaning up the streets. And so we were recently approached by that group and organization. And we're working through whether or not the, the spending timeframe and the constraints gives us enough, and the, the resources that are available, whether that's a viable contract that we can enter into. So, you know, these are real-time kind of conversations that we're having. I haven't had a chance to circle back with Ms. Swigger to see if this is something that ultimately is an option. But in this bucket, you know, those are the kind of things that we'd want to look at if we're not able to expand the homeless parking program. You know, this was our recommendation based upon just kind of the, the split. And of course, you know, given the council, other eligible uses. And, you know, we'd look for your direction on, you know, whether or not we've balanced this in the right way. With the caveat that, you know, staff capacity to develop new innovative programs or to take on new, you know, development of programs that are to fill a gap from the county, that's pretty difficult. We would have to make significant trade-offs. So as you, as you work through the numbers tonight and you, and you feel ultimately what is the right balance, we just ask you to take that into context.
So, okay, thank you for that. And also though, so do we have enough, I get it. We're not going to solve all the problems right now in the downtown. It's a, it's a big challenge. But in terms of the unsheltered folks in the downtown issue, are you saying that we have enough funding or we're in, we're in communication? I hear you saying we have some funding that we can at least begin to lift this program in a way that will be meaningful for downtown businesses?
So I, I think what we're looking at is, you know, one is, you know, the, the, the safe parking program to split with the county is about 10,000 of that 30,000. And that'll get us through the end of the calendar year. The remaining amount could be used. And I, I need to approach Capslow and see if there's a willingness to, to help us manage potential, a, a program at other lots, whether it's a city lot or other locations that would not have the program requirements or that are typically associated with the 40 Prado program. And then thirdly, is there, you know, the possibility with these limited funds to at least start some, some sort of effort or enhance cleaning and perhaps, you know, employ, you know, one or more individuals in our downtown to help out with the cleanliness programs that we're looking to achieve in the downtown?
Okay. So I think maybe what I'm wondering is, and obviously staff has already made this assessment and that's why the numbers are how they are. But are we putting a lot of money into parklets, which I'm all for? So there's no issue there. But at the expense of dealing with this other issue that is also impacting the downtown, would it be more wise to carve out some of the money that right currently is delineated here for either small business grants or parklets to address this issue that, I, I mean, I'm hearing a lot about from downtown businesses in terms of things that are impacting them in addition to all the other things that are impacting them right now? So I, yeah, I, so yeah, that's what I'm wondering. Like, so the parklets are great and we need, you know, more of them and that's great. And the number one thing I'm hearing about are unsheltered folks in the downtown and the impact on business. So are we not putting enough money towards that? And how do we understand how we're trying to support small business in the downtown with these limited amount of funds that we have?
I, I would say, Madam Mayor, that, you know, we, we typically look at programs where there's an existing program. And I don't think, you know, 566 by itself is not enough funding in and alone to deal with the systemic root cause issues associated with homelessness. And so, you know, and given that, you know, last week, it was an all hands-on-deck effort to deal with just getting parklets up and running. And likely, we're going to continue to have new announcements that are going to continue to, to drive diversion of staff. The recommendation is largely predicated on trying to leverage existing systems and programs and rather than create new ones. And so that's, that's the overall approach. And so, but of course, it's up to, up to the council how you want to allocate these funds. We're just trying to then really honor the medical and the work and the programs and relationships that we already have today.
I, I see you, Councilmember Christensen. Just one more question, Derek. So it does seem like the county could be stepping up more in our downtown in particular to help us with these issues. Is there, is there a conversation, I heard you kind of briefly mention it, that is happening with the county in terms of their CARES Act funding and also all the other funding that they get around unsheltered folks? And funneling some of that into San Luis Obispo downtown specifically to help with this?
You know, those conversations are underway. I know, and perhaps Councilmember Christensen, who serves on AGSOC, might have an update. Originally, as you know, there was a fair amount of funding that was made initially, at least exclusively available to counties. And I think to some extent, cities for the Home Key Project was a project to either rent on a short-term basis or purchase hotels for conversion for kind of rapid rehousing. The county has, given all, everything else that's going on, has not signaled its willingness to, to, to play a lead role in that. So given that the impacts to our city, you know, and this is one of the things I have to make a call as, as a city manager. I did ask Kara Brashagan, our Housing Programs Manager, to look into that. We think that there's a lot of promise. There's about 28 million bucks, for example, in that program that's set aside for the Central Coast. So we're pursuing some options. So we're trying to fill, fill that gap. But there again, you know, we have just, you know, our expertise and our role and authority is really related to kind of housing and public safety. We don't have the other, you know, typical safety nets, you know, social services, alcohol, drug, mental health, you know, access to SSI and other things. And so we have limited ability. I think, you know, your question raises kind of a larger one about our overall engagement with the county, which is, as you know, something that we integrated into our legislative platform this year. And, you know, we're just getting started and starting to talk with our team about the best way to approach the county and just really start to highlight with data and other stories about the gap and the impact of services is having on the city of Slow.
Okay, great. Thank you for that. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes. Well, that was my question. I can't remember. So I do want to hear Bob Hill talk to me about what small business grants involve because I would like to hear what is going on somewhere else. I also will just add to the conversation or the small seminar we just had on addressing homeless issues downtown. You know, if it was that easy of just throwing some money at hiring homeless people downtown, we would have done this 20 years ago or 40 years ago. So the, the, the challenge with folks downtown that I can see is that they don't just need a job, they need what's called case management, which is what our folks in Social Services, TIMA, Wilshire, all the partners, Capslow, what they do is they provide the support, the ongoing support to help people find, get, keep jobs, find, get, keep housing, go through programs such as drug and alcohol rehab, get mental health services, get medications, that kind of stuff. So that doesn't, you don't just do that, like, you know, overnight. That, that is why, you know, the city doesn't do that at all because it takes setting up, it's a huge investment in terms of not only money. it's a huge investment in terms of not only money, but actual finding people to do it. And all those things cost money and my uh urge, my sense right now is that yes, I, I certainly can understand the downtown businesses being concerned about this. It's the same concern they were expressing before COVID started and it's going to continue to be expressed. And we're working on some aspects of that in terms of housing and, and those kinds of things in support for our Capslow and, and other nonprofits. What, what we really though need to do is make sure that the city stays solvent because if we don't have, uh, we don't have a tax base, we don't have any money to do anything, including helping our homeless folks. So I appreciate the thought around um around, you know, trying to do something direct with our homeless population, especially downtown. But I think it is uh at this stage, at this point, uh pretty misguided to just be throwing money at, at it. And I, I just wanted to say that. But I would like to hear from Bob Hill about what the small business grants are that, you know, again, you know, you could hand out money until kingdom come. So what, what, uh, what could we get for 200,000 that makes it uh worth uh staff recommending? Uh, that amount of money come uh be uh assigned to that uh, that uh expense? I think Mr. Hill's going to answer the question.
Sure. Um, thank you, uh, Councilmember Christensen, Mayor Harmon, uh, City Manager Johnson. Can everybody hear me okay? Yep, great. Um, so Bob Hill, um, I am your Sustainability and Natural Resources official and also liaison officer in our Emergency Operations Center right now. And I've been stepping forward from my prior nonprofit experience to try and lend some expertise to um not only grant writing these days, but also um some grant making. So as City Manager Johnson mentioned, we do have an opportunity to direct some of this CARES Act coronavirus relief funds uh to making small business grants. And really uh, uh, overarching consideration that we really need to be mindful of is how quickly we actually need to go to make this happen. So we need to have all of these funds, whether for any of the programs that you see on the slide right now, including small business grants, um, uh, established, money out the door, money spent, and be able to report on that by October 30th so that the state um can turn around and do their reporting to um the federal level of government. And so in that regard, uh, I think our concept for the small business grant program is to keep it simple and do something that's very streamlined so we can get money out the door um where it can uh make a difference and, and benefit local businesses, particularly those that have been affected by closures and other impacts related to COVID that affect their um service level delivery or product level delivery. So we're um looking, uh, you know, there's a variety of different ways you can slice this. You could look at making $45,000 grants or 20 $10,000 grants or something somewhere in between. And we haven't quite settled on that. We want it to be uh something where we're distributing the money um to have the greatest impact, but also that it's a dollar amount that's meaningful um and helpful as well. Um, so uh, those are some key questions. Uh, we're also looking at the basic fundamental eligibility requirements. Um, and uh whatever evaluative criteria we would decide upon which to award grant funds as well. And we're certainly happy to bring back uh what the fully um considered program looks like through a council memorandum to the city council. We have a, a draft project plan that is uh complete already and, and uh we're, of course, waiting for your direction um uh tonight on this item before we wrap that up and finalize it. Uh, the last thing I wanted to say, uh, as was mentioned, is the Community Foundation of San Luis Obispo County and the Chamber of Commerce are also partnering on a small business grant program. And so we'll um be in close contact with their staff, Mr. Dantona and Heidi McPherson, um, to see what synergies and experience and um how we can work best together as a community on the program.
So is it, would these kind of, kinds of grants be, for instance, if it was a, a, um, a business that, for instance, needed some kind of special equipment or new uh IT help? You know, in other words, they, you know, they kind of just need a little help in order to keep open and stay open and keep their employees? Uh, that kind of thing, is that, is that the kind of thing that, that we're talking about? I'm, I'm still, I don't really get, I mean, I just would like an example of an actual.
Yeah, sure. Great question, uh, Councilmember Christensen. I think that our, our broad intent is to make it uh as much at the discretion of the business uh establishment as possible to use the money where they need it most. Um, whether it's making a reinvestment in a piece of equipment or IT, um, or whatever the case may be. There are some specific things that we need to do due diligence in regarding the coronavirus relief fund to make sure that ultimately we have um eligible expenses that are, these grant funds are being used for. And um also that um, um, we're receiving uh sufficient um grant reporting from those grant recipients, potential grant recipients, to make sure that we can accurately give that back to the state and then turn back to the, to the feds.
And so you, staff feels that we have enough of a solid, solid idea of what we could spend this money on, that it's worth uh doing this now as opposed to, I mean, you, you're still kind of vague. And I'm just wanting to, you keep saying, yes, we're going to do this, but then you say, we, you know, I want to like, give me an example of a local business, maybe in Grover or something that, you know, just to give me a real example of a real business and what, what this would do. I, I, I just.
So Madam Mayor, if I, if I, if I may, you know, we looked at Nevada's program, Grover's program. Just to give you an idea, Nevada's program is, you know, it's a for-profit or a nonprofit visit. They have to have a physical storefront in the city. Typically it's small businesses, one to 26 employees. You know, you have to demonstrate some economic impact. You have to show that you can't secure the source from other sources. You have to have less than a million dollars in gross revenue. And so I'll give you an example, there was a baker down in Grover Beach. You know, they needed some time in between the PPE fu, PPP funding and other funding to be able to make payroll, buy stuff, stay in business before they secured other funding. And so, you know, in talking to Matt Bronson, it was a key bridge amount of funding that got them through that cycle, that grant, to help them stay open and stay in business. And so, you know, those are the kind of examples that we're looking for. And I can tell you, and just talking to, to, to Matt Bronson and others, you know, it, it made a significant difference for many of these businesses. And it really showed that the city um really understood the, the nature of the problem and how precarious some of these small businesses really were.
Great, that's very helpful. I appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you, Bob and Derek.
Welcome.
Okay, does anybody else have any, uh, Councilmember Pease?
Uh, thank you so much and um thank you for the, the um, the thought that went into how, you know, how to use these funds. So a couple of questions. Um, one is uh how um, you know, if we, to try to give you a little bit of flexibility, that it's maybe a homeless program uh and then that way, if you need to shift it around a little, can we even pass this with a 10% buffer or something if needed that you can kind of scooch it around? So I'd like to be able to give you some flexibility as, as conversations um advance. And then, um, and then my second thought is about the um, the grants. Uh, and there's kind of a bigger question about um programs for children um that we're just uh with the schools likely staying online um for a while longer and parents really wanting to have healthy activities for their kids. And we know that this is certainly, I, I, I know that the city staff is already looking and seeing what we can do. Um, so I guess the question would be, um, you know, from what I'm seeing, this distribution of funds that you propose makes sense at this time and, and that just as a council will have to consider later other kinds of options for childcare. So then, so uh, so maybe a little bit of feedback on that. And then I, and then the corollary is within the small business grants, is there an opportunity for small daycare kinds of um businesses or nonprofit or for-profit um businesses to be able to participate in this program? And um be able to address um uh the, at least part of that childcare concern? And it, and I did hear, I just wanted to, you know, chime in that um, what I heard from Mayor Harmon about the homelessness was not that she was trying to solve homelessness in a moment um with uh, you know, $30,000 as much as, it's kind of similar to me, kind of like, how can we do childcare and business? It's like, how can we help our downtown businesses um by addressing the additional concern that they're seeing about folks not maybe wanting to come downtown and, and, you know, support our economy um because of the exacerbated situation of um folks who don't have housing right now? So I think we're all kind of circling a lot of the same things, wanting to keep that flywheel of economic activity and just there's a lot of parts and pieces that go with it. Sorry, that was long.
Yeah, great, great, Andy. And, and so I would love, enjoy the flexibility because I'm not sure this will spend exactly this way. So if there's some flexibility that the council wants to build into this to give some discretion, that would be great. You know, on, on the childcare side, you know, there's um, there is no shortage of eagerness, support, interest on trying to solve this. You know, right now, we're trying to uh bring everyone together. We've got five different groups that are meeting throughout the county on childcare, all talking about the same thing in different ways. So we're trying to bring them together. We've got the EVC, the Slow County Office of Ed, the San Luis Coastal District, we have First Five, we have the, you know, um, city managers and the county. And so we're trying to get this together to figure out, okay, how do we not silo this? And uh make sure we're doing this uh with limited resources that we have available as a region? How do we benefit the region the most? Um, and so I, there may be an, an ask that comes back to the, to the city council. We just don't know. Um, you know, everything is so fluid. I think there's some questions and some surveys out there about, you know, parents um uh willingness to place children in childcare programs. And so we just don't know what the demand is like. So I think one of the areas is looking at, we're looking at is, is, you know, a survey. And, and I know that there's some groups that are working on that. So I think we'll have an ask that'll come back to um the council. I think you'll have to take that into context is probably in October when we have a better picture of where we are financially. Um, because, you know, things have turned out differently than I think a lot of us imagined uh back in uh, in June when we adopted the budget. And so we made some assumptions and forecast. And so we're going to have to juggle that with everything else, understanding that this is a priority. But I think to, to your other kind of more pointed question, and Bob can amplify on this, we can certainly, as part of the grant criteria, give weight to nonprofits that are providing, you know, immediate social programs to address, you know, the, um, you know, I would think marginalized populations that have been impacted by COVID-19. That can be one of the criteria we use to, to award grants.
Yeah, uh, thank you, Derek. I, I will add that in, in addition to those groups that are, you're needing it, particularly to help uh Bridge and, and uh daycare uh would be a great example uh as well. Uh, back to uh Councilmember Christensen's comment of, you know, a type of business that may need to uh buy a piece of equipment or staff up very quickly in order to handle the additional demand um while, while other funding comes in. Uh, regarding um how we, how we prioritize and what evaluative criterias we select, we can certainly look at those kinds of things as well and are looking at those kinds of things. And have detailed in our project plan as well, diversity, equity and inclusion considerations to ensure that those uh out there um have procedural equity. They know that the program's out there, the program is accessible, they're aware of how to get there and uh make, make funding for the application uh in terms of distributional equity, making sure that a broad sector of the community uh is also benefiting from these funds uh and so forth. So that's uh very much top of mind for us as well.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Thank you so much, everyone. City Clerk, uh, Councilmember Stewart?
Um, first I just want to say thank you. I appreciate all the work you guys are doing on this. Oh, okay. Um, and um, as far as the childcare part, I really appreciate you looking hard at this because I know that there's going to be, the aspect of um licensing is not exactly the easiest, even the best of times. So imagining what that kind of hybrid model could be will be interesting to see. As far as the um business plan, I'd love to see the council memo idea of kind of what you, how you plan to break it up as far as the 200,000, you know, many small grants or fewer larger grants will be really helpful. Will the, will there be more weight on those who are specifically focused on COVID-19 safety measures? Like, let's say someone has to put in Plexiglas to have their business be successful? Is that going to be something that will be um a focus?
Yes, I mean, we, we want to consider um absolutely uh public safety, uh again, equity, inclusion. Um, and so we're going to be looking uh for folks that um are, are doing a nice job in, in all those different respects.
Thanks. And then I would, I, I echo the um taking the parking out of this description of the homeless programs because then I think that gives you a little bit more freedom um to, or flexibility to help with whatever is necessary. And, and you know, whatever comes up is the most priority at this time. I look forward to seeing how we partner up with the Community Foundation and um, and the county and go from there. Thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, City Clerk, are there any public comment? Is there any public comment on this item?
No, there is not.
Okay, in that case, can we get a motion?
Um, I move uh staff recommendations and um, I don't, Derek, would it be helpful to put in a plus or minus 10%, 20%? Or is it already kind of approximate enough to move it as is?
Yeah, I'd recommend authorize the finance director to allocate the 566, 680 and CARES Act funding in the following amounts and authorize the city manager to move up to 10% between the categories as described in, in the, in the uh Council of Agenda Report.
Great. So that, and then strike the word um parking from the homeless programs? Understanding that it would likely go to that, we know that that's a priority, but again, in terms of flexibility. So that's my motion.
Thank you, Andy.
I'll second.
Thank you. City Clerk?
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Harmon?
Yes, and with that, it passes 5-0. So thank you to everyone that's working hard on all of that. And now we will move on to public comment. This is for items not on the agenda. Uh, before I get into the details of that, City Clerk, do we have any speakers?
Uh, no ma'am, we do not.
Okay, all right. Okay, one more piece.
Uh, thank you. I, um, I, we did get some public uh correspondence about Sister Cities and I just wanted to, um, I, I see that um Frank Owen, who sent that correspondence, is on the line. Um, he, he put the kind of the, the comment in writing, but he's available if there's a question. So and um, if there is consensus from all of you, I guess uh my ask would be, um, does any, are we supportive of, at a future meeting, considering a sister city um kind of partnership? And then if we are interested in that in the future, then that would indicate our support. And um I'd be happy to be the liaison to uh Mr. Owen and uh his group in order to be able to follow through with joining this Sister Cities International. They're going to fund it. Um, and then that would kind of explore um opportunities, um, different. Uh, you start with a friendship before you come up with a partnership, et cetera. So if there is interest in, in that. I see it, Carlin.
On unmatched.com, so that's perfect. Uh, I'm, I'm in full support of that. When I first got here, I had a lot of conversations with community members about Sister City. It seemed like it was actually maybe a lot more complicated than you think it might be and there was a lot of expense involved. But if you want to start that process, I think that would be great. I think building relationships with alliances is always the right thing to do. Councilmember Christensen?
Always the right thing to do unless you're trying to stay focused on the goal.
I know, I know, I'm just asking for a, you know, would we?
My recollection is that it is more complex and does take more than just saying, yeah, it's a great idea. Which it is a great idea in the sense of, yeah, but it's also, does it take? I don't know if it takes what it takes and I, I just, you know, I, we keep saying we're not going to do this and then we keep doing it. So I'm just saying, we said we wouldn't do this and I don't want to do it. I don't want to do it now, it doesn't mean I don't want to do it later. But no, the answer is no. It doesn't, does take, it does take staff time and effort.
Those first conversations, is that what I'm hearing you say, Andy? You're not asking spending your staff time. You're asking, you're saying, you're basically saying that you're willing to have that initial conversation and then?
I'm not saying that, I'm just saying when you have the initial conversation, then people think, oh, okay. And then you, you go down the road and pretty soon, if you don't do it, you, people get really mad. Because it's like, well, you kind of let us think that you were going to do it and now you're saying, no, you can't after all. So I just like to say upfront, you know, this is a great idea, but now is not the time. That's all I'm saying. That's all I'm saying. And I'm not going to say anymore because I've said this a zillion times and I'm kind of sick of saying it. So that's it.
Yeah, so you, you don't, I probably don't even really need um, council permission or anything like that to have these conversations anyway. So if you want to start that process.
You know, I, I don't want to, oh, sorry, Derek was going to chime in. I was just going to say, it would be helpful to have at least three people be open to exploring without any staff time at all. I promise, I promise um, without a, a broader consensus. But in order for this group of excited, interested community members to even explore the opportunities that, that they, they need some, you know, at least okay from the council.
I am 100% supportive. I think one of the challenges with San Luis Obispo is that we don't, um, are, uh, we, we don't have a view really much outside our own city borders. And so partnering with the sister city at some point when it works, seems like it would be beneficial to this community. And if you're willing to take that on without commitment from staff or any resources, then I think that's a great beginning. Without, with very little uh, need for commitment. Uh, city manager Derek, it's city manager Johnson.
Madam Mayor, I'm, I'm, you know, I'm happy to dust off a memo. I think we've done this a couple of times since I've been here. And just, because I think, I appreciate Mr. Owen's information. It is, I think, unfortunately more complex. Um, and so um, it does require city involvement. I'm happy to just dig up the memo. If there's opportunities for the, the community to pick that up on an ongoing basis, that's fantastic. Um, and so happy, but at least I think it would be helpful for the council. Wouldn't require us, work from us to dust off that memo, give it to you and say you've got the background and information.
Derek, can you um, hold off on the, do we need the memo even just to kind of let this group do their exploration or?
I think what the city manager is saying is we've explored this several times before, so there's some existing work product on this issue.
But I guess I'm wondering, dusting off something old, maybe there's new information about what this would look like to this group.
Sure, i- i- and, and this is obviously council's call. You guys drive our work program. And, and so if this is something that you guys want to take on and, and agendize, we can certainly do that. I think that there's, um, we, we've just done a lot of the research. And so um, if, if, if you don't want that information, we're happy to hold it back until the right time.
Andy, how about let's start with looking at all the information we do have. Then we can decide, I think that, you know, obviously it's not a good time to expand into some what feels like icing on the cake kind of stuff, even though I'm in full support, as I've said. Why don't we take a look at the memo and the information that we do have? If, if staff can send that to the council and we can reflect on that. And then that'll be at least some good and very relevant information. And then we can make a decision if it makes sense at all to spend any more staff time on it. Does that feel right for you, council member P's?
I, I, I regret even having to take up staff's time to dig up the memo and council's time having to review a memo. I just, I, I, I feel like there's a community group that's interested in exploring and, um, and was going to try to let them carry their fresh take. Um, but um, I, I'm, I'm open if, if that feels better.
I'm guessing, you know, it's pretty easy for staff to probably find the memo and council can decide whether they want to read it or not. If you want a memo, I'll, I'll, I'll commit to reading the memo. And then if you and I brown act partner on it or what have you and talk about, we can do that and talk to the community members. And then decide at that point if it makes any sense at all to do anything more effortful. How about that?
Okay, um, council member Gomez or Stewart or either of you interested in even seeing a memo? I just want to make sure that there's.
I, I am not interested in seeing the memo in the sense of.
Okay.
There are a million good causes to go after. This, to me, during this period, is just not one that I am going to spend much time.
Okay. Okay.
Um, I, I would have to say the same, not right now. Uh, I love the idea of Sister City. And I actually asked about it when I first came on the council a couple of years back or a year and a half back. Um, but right now, I feel like we really have other focuses. We have to really hone in on.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Mayor, um, Mr. Owen does have his hand up. I believe he might want to say something if you would like me to unmute his mic.
Oh, sure.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you. Can you hear, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, I think that um, well, first of all, uh, thank you for allowing me to uh, speak. I think that the uh, barrier or the amount of work that uh, people envision is uh, is, is a lot greater than uh, what we're trying to do right now. We simply want to join the organization uh, with no obligation to the city so that we can ask questions and participate uh, as members of the organization and draw on their resources. There are um, 350 sister city relationships in the state of California. Um, and I've been in several meetings. I'm going to stay active with the organization anyway. But it would be very helpful to be a uh, a member uh, from a, from a city here. Um, but uh, the real work and the commitment and, and the time uh, does not occur until you're trying to form a relationship, a friendship or a partnership. All we're trying to do is just uh, join the organization as the city of San Luis Obispo so that we can ask questions and investigate. So that's, I don't envision this being any uh, any uh, burden, any time burden on the uh, on your staff. And I realize that this is the COVID time, but uh, uh, I, I don't know, everyone's Zoom literate nowadays. And uh, I've been in a number of meetings so far over the past month with uh, people from really all over the world. So it's surprising to me that San Luis uh, with the uh, 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 the number of people that travel, uh, the number of educated people here in this town uh, is not a full-fledged member of this organization already.
All right. Thank you so much for that. And council member Stewart?
I, I guess I'm just wondering, maybe Andy, we could talk off, talk offline if it's, I don't want to cause a brown act, so you and Heidi or you and me. But um, I guess I'm curious why we need to agendize this if we're just looking at joining it as a member. That's, I think that's where I'm getting confused now.
Yeah, my, my sense was not that we would, um, I guess I, I was trying to figure out just logistically how to affirm our council's support for at least joining the organization and letting this group do the exploration. So I thought if we agreed that in the future, we might um, consider it, consider it as a, a formal adoption, that that would be the, the indicator. And, and again, I, anyway.
I, I just think maybe the memo should go to this, to Mr. Owen also. There, there's been some good work done on, on the exploration and that would probably be a useful thing for him to maybe see also. So it, uh, that would just be a great, I mean, I don't want, you know, I, I do appreciate the enthusiasm. I do appreciate the interest, but if it's involving the city, at some point, it's going to involve time and effort from the city and resources. And that's not what I want to spend it on right now.
Okay. Thank you. Okay.
So Madam Mayor, just to close the loop, I'm going to provide the memo. It'll take us literally five minutes to find it. It's a good reading. It's good background. We've done the work. I, I, I couldn't tell you if the rules have changed, council member P's, since then. But I think it just, it would be helpful to understand just the, the work that's been done. And then the council can evaluate it and then we can come back and revisit if there's majority direction.
Great. Sounds good. Thank you.
All right. Then with that, we will move on to the consent agenda. This is for items deemed to be non-controversial. Uh, city clerk, do we have any speakers on the consent?
No, we do not.
Okay, thank you.
I will go ahead and move consent agenda then.
May we have a second, please?
I'll second.
You, city clerk?
Moving too fast. I keep losing my mouse. Sorry.
Council member Christiansen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Council member P's?
Yes.
Council member Stewart?
Yes.
Mayor Harmon?
Yes, and with that, the consent passes 5 to 0. And now we have a visiting board to consider placing a general sales tax measure on the November 3rd, 2020 ballot and introduce an ordinance amending municipal code section 3.15. And city manager Derek Johnson and assistant city manager Ryan Betts will please.
Oh my gosh, Ryan, those girls are so cute. Are they a part of the presentation? Yes, we will definitely do the sales tax for those girls.
Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. I think we're trying to bring up the presentation and Ryan does have some beautiful children. Um, so, um, thank you so much uh, for tonight. Um, Ryan, is, is there any way we can just get that so it's just the, the slide?
Share your other screen, Ryan.
Our apologies, we're just trying to. Ryan, are you, is that where we're going with? Okay. Ryan, are you going to try to bring up the full screen or? And we can't hear you. All right. Well, um, why don't we just go back to the other approach? Well, there we go. Fantastic. Well, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. It has been a, a long journey for us to get here tonight. We appreciate everyone's work. Um, you know, I, um, actually this effort proceeds, you know, my time as the city manager. Um, we actually began some of this work back in the 2015-17 financial plan. I think part of this journey has been really about, you know, the San Luis Obispo that all of us want uh, it to be. You know, we have had an amazing history uh, over the last, you know, 100-plus uh, years of engaging the community and talking about the vision of San Luis Obispo. And as you know, we have many plans that guide the work. It's our general plan. It's our downtown concept plan. We have our upcoming exciting Parks and Rec uh, master plan. Uh, we have this fall, we'll be coming to the city council, the Active Transportation Plan. And through a lot of those discussions, and I think a lot of the discussions that we've been having uh, through our robust public engagement process, you know, we quickly realized that we were at a place um, in terms of the city and, and the trajectory that the council and the community wanted to go with our major city goals. That we really had to take a, a long-term look at um, our fiscal resources and take a look at whether or not our fiscal resources were going to get us to a place where we could maintain the quality of life at San Luis Obispo and bring about some of the areas that I think the community wanted to see, see addressed. So I'm thrilled to bring forward this item. It is the culmination of, you know, nearly uh, five years worth of work. Um, there have been many twists and turns in the road um, on this uh, journey. Um, some of which, you know, included um, our whole infrastructure analysis, our public engagement. Uh, we went through a comprehensive process to uh, come up with a fiscal health response plan to balance out our budget and to look at uh, different ways to address our long-term pension liabilities. And through all of that work, you know, ultimately culminated in, and really a, a public engagement process um, that began um, early this year in January. And then COVID came and um, really a lot of our ability to engage with the community was put on hold. While we gave our, you know, intense amount of focus on making sure that we were there for our community and that we were providing the critical services that our community relies, uh, relies on. I think throughout all of this, um, and it'll show and the, and the data that's been presented by, by Dr. Bernard um, that we have succeeded. We have um, shown that uh, from September through um, June of this year, that we have uh, built trust and confidence in the city organization. We have been there when the city has needed us to provide those critical services. And people value those services in a way. And I think what the public survey uh, results show is that people who live here in this community continue to want to see investments. They still, they continue to want to see services. And we'll talk a little bit about what those priorities are tonight. So with that, um, if we could go to the next slide, Ryan? Um, our, we have a, a series of four recommendations. Um, the first one is to receive the results of the public engagement and our outreach efforts. And we'll walk you through all of the engagement efforts. Um, the second one is uh, is the recommendation from council member P's and Stewart. And I would be remiss for thanking them for their uh, many, many, many hours of work and uh, with staff and our consultant team um, to provide just critical strategic insight and perspective as we move forward with it. Without, we would not be here today, uh, today with, I think um, some results that give you great insight to what our community is thinking. Of course, we also benefit from an independent revenue enhancement oversight committee. And they have taken a look at this and both of their recommendations are to move forward with uh, moving forward an ordinance for voter consideration at a voter-approved funding level at 1.5 cents until ended by voters. The third recommendation um, is to introduce an ordinance, uh, as I mentioned uh, that will advance that for voter consideration. And then lastly is adopt resolutions um, directing the city attorney to prepare an impartial analysis and calling for written arguments and rebuttal arguments that's shown an attachment need. So next slide. So with that, I'll turn it over to Ryan and Ryan's going to walk you through the presentation. So we're going to bounce a, a little bit around tonight. So appreciate your, your patience. It has been a huge team effort and there's been a huge lift to get us to here. So with that, Ryan, take it away.
Thank you, uh, city manager Johnson. Can everyone hear me? I know you can't see me. So the choice is between seeing me and seeing a full presentation. And I'm making the choice. You're going to see the full presentation. I also uh, want to again echo uh, city manager Johnson's thanks to both council member P's and Stewart for serving on the uh, ad hoc subcommittee and the revenue enhancement oversight commission for their hours of assistance and work on this effort. I also want to note before I get into the background that there was a council correspondence uh, sent to the city council and posted on the city's website earlier today that provided an update on the online survey results that closed this morning and additional proposed changes to the draft ordinance. I can go uh, through those in more detail, but the short story is uh, we were actually conducting and uh, want to continue uh, conducting community stakeholder presentations. And we were driving folks in the community to that online survey. So it was critical that we remain that, that remains open up until this morning. So we can provide the city council the freshest data about what the community values most. And then the uh, proposed draft changes to the ordinance uh, is simply a review by uh, the state department on tax and fee administration to be consistent with what other cities and counties are doing should the council decide to move forward with that ordinance. Uh, I want to provide a quick background on the, the, the uh, the road or the adventure of this effort. It really began uh, as part of the 2015 financial plan as an effort to plan in the future for all the necessary infrastructure to implement the land use and circular. to implement the land use and circulation element update, which is a very important element of the city's general plan. Um, it, the effort also included uh, in the fiscal sustainability and responsibility major city goal in 2017-19. And it mainly focused at that time on the replacement and maintenance of roads, bike paths, parks, and facilities. And certainly wanted to explore funding options in order to meet the vision of the community. Based upon the current level of available funding and the community's vision of San Luis Obispo, what emerged was an annual financial gap of $17 million, which now includes the economic impacts of the COVID-19 pandemic on the city's revenues. And what we learned as we engaged with the residents, community groups, advisory bodies, and the city council was that the vision, and it became clear that community members valued the need to maintain our existing infrastructure and city services. Want to uh, note, like we've mentioned before, along the way, the city council appointed a council ad hoc subcommittee to explore the potential of renewing and and um, renewing the existing local revenue measure and directed staff to work directly with the revenue enhancement oversight commission on their potential roles to support and participate in the public engagement process. The city also hired an independent consultant to get into two focus groups and two statistically valid surveys. The results of those focus groups and the first statistically valid survey was presented to the city council on December 3rd, 2019. A follow-up statistically valid survey was recently completed last month, and Dr. Richard Bernard will present those results later on in the presentation. Our public engagement and outreach efforts, what we call "slow forward", was launched in late December of 2019 and focused primarily on conversations with residents, community groups, and advisory bodies about the type of services, maintenance, and infrastructure that they value most. We also launched two online surveys and advertised those surveys in local newspapers, radio, and social media to encourage community members to participate in this critical and important conversation. And what we heard from the community members was the importance of protecting essential services, maintaining our infrastructure, and an overwhelming sense to maintain San Luis Obispo's unique character and quality of life. And that sense has only strengthened with the social and economic impacts of COVID-19 on the community.
Yeah, thank you.
It is important to note that the financial gap that I discussed earlier would have been much higher.
Tell Derek to turn off his mic.
Uh, boss, will you turn off your mic? I don't, I I think he did it. We'll see. All right. Uh, real quick, it is important to note that the financial gap that we are facing would have been much higher if it was not for the leadership of the city council and the community's support to adopt a fiscal health response plan in 2018. Several years ago, similar to most cities and counties in California, we faced an increase in the city's pension costs. With input from the community and approval from the city council, we implemented the fiscal health response plan. This plan includes employees paying more of their pension costs, implementing best practices to streamline operations and project delivery, and a voter-approved cannabis business tax. All of this resulted in $8.9 million of annual savings in interest. The fiscal health response plan shows how the city continues to address challenges and issues to ensure we have a balanced budget. And if it wasn't for this adoption of this plan, the city would be in a much worse financial position due to the impacts of COVID-19. But despite these efforts, our community recognizes the need for more services, maintenance, and infrastructure to help maintain San Luis Obispo's unique character and quality of life. On December 3rd, 2019, staff presented the cities to the city council the results of the two focus groups held in June 2019 and the first statistically valid survey held in September of 2019. Just a summary of those results included, almost six in 10 survey respondents perceived the city needs additional funds to provide the level of services and infrastructure residents need and want. A majority of survey respondents initially support a conceptual local ballot measure at 63%. And there was no statistical difference in its sport between extension of the of the current voter-approved local revenue measure, otherwise known as Measure G, at a one and a half cent rate or a one-cent rate. As mentioned earlier, "Slow Forward" was launched in late December and included presentations to over 23 community groups, advisory bodies, and two online surveys in order to gauge further with the community. The survey results uh, received over 1,000 responses, representing approximately 52 hours of public comment. Specifically, community members identified a number of top priorities, including economic recovery and protecting long-term fiscal stability, maintaining public safety, fire, and emergency response, addressing homelessness, repairing streets, sidewalks, and potholes, keeping public areas safe and clean, preserving our open space and natural areas, helping ensure children have safe places to play, preparing for wildfires and other natural disasters, protecting creeks from pollution, and finally, requiring all funds used locally to benefit the community. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic, public engagement efforts were postponed in March as the city focused primarily on the delivery of essential services to support the health and safety of the community. The economic impacts of the city's ability to deliver essential services to the community is being challenged. We are not alone. All across our county, state, and nation, local governments are facing a revenue gap due to the declining revenues and the ability to deliver the programs, services, and projects the community values most. This graph shows how the city's general fund revenues, which supports public safety, fire, and emergency response, community programs like childcare that support our local workforce, have significantly declined. We are now facing a revenue gap of $6.5 million in 1920, $8.6 million in 2021, and $5.9 million in 2022, excuse me. To offset the decline in revenue, the city has implemented our fiscal health contingency plan that immediately placed a hiring, purchasing, and travel chill. To balance the budget, the city reduced its operating capital budget, froze vacant positions, suspended city programs, and furloughed over 200 temporary employees. A number of capital projects have also been deferred, including Laguna Lake dredging, new streetlights, new bike trails, and the downtown security project. These reductions will have an impact on the level of services to the community and the city's ability to maintain our infrastructure. And of course, there is a potential for further service and capital project reductions over the next several years as we recover from the impacts of COVID-19. In June, public engagement outreach efforts started again with presentations to community groups and a relaunch of the online survey. To reflect the social and economic impacts of COVID-19, two additional topics were added to the online survey that you could see before you on that slide that are bolded, which include programs to support economic recovery and support for community organizations and nonprofits that serve the communities most vulnerable. This slide shows how respondents prioritized these two new products, new topics with the original 10 that was launched in December. Another best practice is to conduct a follow-up statistically valid survey as close to the date that the city council will ultimately decide on whether to place a potential ballot measure on the ballot. There are two primary benefits to this approach. First, to test if voter priorities have shifted, especially if a major event occurs in the community, such as fires, earthquakes, floods, and certainly a pandemic like COVID-19. The second benefit is to test the viability of a ballot measure and recommend any modifications to the language to ensure it captures the voters' top priorities. And with that, I'd like to introduce Dr. Richard Bernard with FM3 to present the results of the recently completed statistically valid survey. And uh, Richard.
While Richard is um, phoning in, I do want to take a chance to say how much I appreciate um, staff, but also Richard as a consultant for all these uh, meetings has been just so informative and so helpful. It's much appreciated. Richard, we can see you. Can, are you on Zoom? Can we hear you?
We're try, trying to get it going, so maybe he can, uh, he's calling into the clerk's office.
Can everyone hear me now?
Yes, we can.
People hear me? Great. Okay. Sorry about that. You know, I'm I'm much better at surveys than technology. All right. Uh, I just want to thank uh, Ryan, Greg, um, city manager, and certainly the two council uh, members who have worked tirelessly with me. I think the product that you will see today in terms of the results really suggests that uh, not only are they in, they helped allow me to be in tune with your voters, but it was a very sensitive survey, particularly at this time, and you'll see what I mean shortly. If we can turn to the first slide, please. Uh, we conducted a dual-mode survey, both online and by telephone, and by telephone, I mean cell phones and landlines between June 18th and the 25th. So this is very recent data, as Ryan had mentioned. Surveys were completed with a random sample of 534 uh, registered voters in your city who are likely to vote in the November any general election based on their past voter history and if they were a new registrant, suggesting that they have an interest in the upcoming election. Overall, the margin of error for questions asked of everyone is plus or minus 4.9. And in some cases, we have questions to a random half the sample and other questions to a ran, other random half the sample. Uh, and the margin there of error is plus or minus 6.9. And the reason we did that was we had a lot of questions and we didn't want to overwhelm your um, your residents by having more than a 20-minute survey. Uh, that is pretty daunting in and of itself. Some, you'll may, you may notice that um, when you're looking at the numbers, something might not quite equal 100. I blame that 100%. I blame that entirely on rounding errors. And where we've asked questions of the, in the 2019 survey, where I can track, um, I will show you the results of the current survey and of the previous survey. Next slide, please. The first several slides that I'll be, I'll be discussing relate to perceptions of the electorate, and then I'll move on uh, to the ballot question itself. Now, given the the um, the situation we all find ourselves in with respect to the pandemic and the ec, and the economic decline and recession, um, you know, I had long conversations with the with uh, the team uh, at your city, and they were very mindful of not being toned up. And so we asked several questions about voters' perceptions about their their experiences now in order to determine if there would be an impact on how they voted, and you'll see that a little bit later in the presentation. So we began by asking uh, whether we asked a random half the sample six months and another random 12 months. If they thought that the pandemic, the coronavirus pandemic would be under control in either six months or 12 months. Uh, the folks who heard six months, 62% said they did not believe it would be under control. And as if you look at the calendar, you know, a little bit more than six months uh, will be toward the end of the year. It will be close to the election. So this is kind of baked into how they're going to respond to the initial ballot question that you'll see in a moment. For those folks uh, who heard 12 months, you could see there's a little bit more optimism, but still only a plurality, consider that uh, the pandemic will be under control within the next 12 months. Next slide, please. We then asked about the local economy. Again, half the sample heard six months, half the sample heard 12 months. If they thought that the local economy, i.e. the city's economy, will be recovered. In the case of the six months, you could see 64% do not believe that it will be recovered. And in the case of 12 months, while there's a little greater optimism, you still see a slight majority saying it will not be recovered within the 12-month period. And then finally, on the next slide, um, in terms of the economy issues, uh, we asked if they um, if they felt that there's been a, if they had a concern about the impact of the coronavirus has had on their financial situation. And we gave them the option of extremely concerned, very concerned, some concerned, or not too concerned. I think this is a really critical question. Um, now, I'll first suggest that uh, 27% said they were extremely or very concerned, and I don't want to minimize that. That is a lot of people, and that's very important for us to to consider. Um, second, I want to tell you comparatively to other jurisdictions, uh, both along the uh, the coast, um, in Southern California, Northern California, and statewide, because I've asked this in a number of surveys, comparatively, this number is a lot lower than we see in some other communities. Again, not to minimize it. If there's even 1%, that's a lot of people, but nonetheless, something for you to consider. Next slide, please. And finally, before we get to the measure specifically, we at, we re-asked the question that we asked in 2019. Do they even think that there's a need for additional funds to provide the city with services and infrastructure that residents need and want? In the, on the left-hand side there of the 2019 results. And there you see 59% said either great or some need with two, a little bit more than two in 10 saying great need. And now, when we've re-asked it in 2020, knowing the particular situation that we all find ourselves in, there is an increase in the perception of great or some need by 10 points, to 69%. And 31%, an increase of 10 points from 2019, say that there is a great need. Now, if you choose to move forward in your discussions about a potential ballot measure, I I understand unless this is change that you're considering a general purpose measure, which would be a 50-plus-one uh, initiative that they would, you would, it would be required to have 51, 50-plus-one vote, votes, 50% plus-one votes in order to pass it. I'm looking at um, items in your survey that meet or exceed margin of error. So things above 55%. And you have a sense in your community that seven out of 10 believe there is great or some need. This is an indication as we move into the ballot question, that there is an understanding of that need. Um, can we go to the next slide and then even the one after that? One more. Thank you. So I am, uh, no, go back one. Um, so I am very much aware that um, it will be the council in tandem with your legal counsel that will decide what will be on the 75-word ballot title and summary. Um, but I'm sure you can appreciate it. I have to test something. So what I did was, I looked back to your previous surveys and I looked at what the voter priorities were. And I, I married them with other um, priorities that are now top of mind in the city because of the COVID-19 and the uh, economic decline. And we framed a ballot question, which your legal counsel tells me is legally permissible. Now, the hope of this survey was to go back after this, uh, after the results and try to strengthen the ballot question to be more responsive to the community, community needs. And you'll notice, i-if you choose to discuss this a little further, that there, there have been slight tweaks to the uh, ballot question up for discussion tonight. But the principle is the same, the structure is um, is exactly, or for the most part, the same. And so we asked this ballot question, if they were on the phone or they read it, if they were online, and we said, based on this description, would you vote yes in favor or no to oppose? Next slide will give you some of the responses. So if they said yes, we asked them, is that definitely yes or probably yes? Because we want to know the intensity, the amount, the percent of people who are willing to say definitely yes. If they said no, we asked them, is that definitely or probably no? Again, we want to know the intensity of the opposition. And if they were uncertain, we tried to push them a little. We said, well, would you lean yes or would you lean no? If they said they would lean yes, we put them in the yes camp. If they said they'd lean no, we put them in the no camp. And then if they still said that they were undecided, they are the pure undecided, that's 6% at the bottom of the slide. So on the initial ballot question, they've heard nothing about this ballot question up until just reading what you just saw a moment ago. The yes was 71. The no was 23, 6% undecided. But I think it's super important to look at the definitely yes, which is 38%. That's a pretty good place to be for an initial ballot question or a survey like this. I've seen a a slew of city sales taxes that have been successful with a start at 38%. with a start at 38%. What was striking to me was that your definitely no was not at the floor that I normally see, which is about 20%. It were only at about 15%. And while there is some soft yeses and some soft nos, this is a very good start to, to begin, uh, the survey with. And it suggests to me that you most likely have about 65% of the folks or a little bit more in play for a 50-plus-one ballot initiative. Now, if I can go on to the next slide, I'm going to revisit some of those economic questions that we asked earlier that I know the city is extremely mindful of. So if we can look on the left-hand side, remember I, I showed a question a moment ago as to whether they thought the local economy, that is the San Luis Obispo, the city economy, will have recovered in six months? And the options were recovered, not recovered, and don't know. The percentages at the bottom are the percentages of the sample that said those following responses. And you can see the blue bars are the people who said definitely, probably, or lean yes. Those are the total yes, that blue bar. The brown bar are the total nos to the addition, the initial ballot question, the definitely, probably, or lean no, and the gray are the pure undecided. And you could see whether they thought it will recover or not, that supported that 62% or above. Now, because it's a smaller sample size, the margin of errors are larger, but nonetheless, it suggests that knowing, or in their perception, knowing that some, some of the folks will expect that economy will not be recovered in six months, uh, that they are overwhelmingly supportive of this. And a similar pattern is shown by 12 months. So in spite of that, you have strong support. Next slide, please. Now, uh, remember, we asked about their personal financial situation and as a result of, uh, the COVID-19 pandemic. And we said, how concerned are you? And again, the extremely or very on the left-hand side, that was a 27%, somewhat is 38, and not-too-concerned was 35% of the respondents. Each of those categories, that blue bar, which represents the total yes, is at, uh, almost seven out of 10 or more in each of those cases, suggesting that in spite of the fact, at least at this moment, in spite of the fact that they are concerned, they are supportive of this measure. And it reminds me of the survey we did last year, or I did last year on your behalf, where we asked household income. And we saw that households that were less affluent were strongly in support of the measure at that time. And the rationale was they are often, those folks are often a beneficiary of the projects and programs and services that you provide. Well, I've just sat through, uh, the start of your, uh, city council meeting where you were discussing a lot of initiatives and ideas that will help the community at a time of need. This really shows a responsiveness and an understanding by the community that there's a link between the two. And then finally, in terms of, next slide, please. Finally, in terms of, uh, level of support. Uh, remember I asked earlier whether they even thought you needed additional funds? And we gave them the option, great need, some need, little or no real need, or they volunteered, they don't know. And the blue bar is still total yes, but I wanted to show you the intensity, the percentages who say definitely yes. So that dark blue in that blue bar are the folks who say definitely yes, they would vote yes on that initial measure. Um, the more they understand the need, the more they are likely to vote yes on this measure. And the certainty that they are likely to vote yes is clear under this, um, under this slide, suggesting that your communication has been effective and to the, the ability, your ability to legally continue, legally permissible, continue to communicate, that will solidify that support. May we go to the next slide, please? So in a moment, I'm going to show you some alternatives to the ballot question we asked. I'll show you the results of the ballot question that I just showed you, and then some alternatives, because we wanted to see, one, if there was a tax intolerance. Was the extension of Measure D to 1.5 too much? Or would they have, or supported a one cent instead, as Ryan had mentioned, uh, earlier? The left side is the ballot question that we asked, uh, previously and showed you, and the results. So you've seen this a few times. 71 yes, 23 no, 6% undecided. And we then asked them, well, when I asked the sample, what happens if instead this was a one-cent stuff? And that would, of course, generate less revenue. The, I'll remind you, the one-point-cent rate extension would generate, uh, estimated 21.6 million. A one cent would generate 14.4 million. And we asked them, based on that description, would you vote yes in favor or no to oppose? There are no statistical differences between extending, uh, the current voter-approved number, uh, to 1.5 or establishing a one-cent sales tax. Hence, it allows the council to consider the options, knowing that the 1.5 at least is not discouraged by your community members. And by, and you could see this by the votes. Next slide, please. We were also, we also wanted to see if the duration mattered. Now, as you may know, legally, in that 75-word ballot title and summary, we, you, you as a city are required to put a duration on the ballot. How long will this last? So in the initial ballot question that you saw earlier, we framed it as intended by voters. And you saw that 71 yes, 23 no, 6% undecided. We went back to the other, I, random, other half the sample, and we said, what ends this, if this would end legally be required to end in 30 years? Done. Well, support dropped by 20% to 51%. Voters and 40% said no, with 23% saying definitely no. Voters want control, say, over whether, uh, how long this ballot measure will be, um, enacted, and, uh, for them, a definitive sunset at 30 years doesn't seem right. So that will, uh, give you the information, and we tested this previously. I'm wondering if people can maybe just mute their, um, phone, because I'm getting feedback. Thank you. Um, we tested this previously in your state and have found the same thing. So, um, just a consistency among your voters. Next slide, please. And now I'm going to show you, um, a couple of slides that we asked them what their priorities were. We said, even if you don't support this measure as is, if this measure was to occur, I'm going to li, list, uh, some possible services and community investments that could be funded by this measure. Now, I know you know, but I'll remind you that a general purpose measure goes into the general fund, and you cannot promise definitively at this time where the money can go. You will have that debate, uh, and I'm sure it will be a well-thought-out debate when you're discussing future budgets. But you can give illustrative examples of where the money can go, and that's what's important. And we gave them this list, we randomized it, and we said after each one, tell me how important would this item be? The dark blue is extremely important. The mid-color blue is very important, and the lightest blue is somewhat important. The brown is not too important, or if they volunteered, they didn't know. I've combined it with the not-too-important, because if they don't know, it can't really be that important. And I've aggregated the extremely and very important on the right-hand side. So a couple of things for you to know. First of all, I've done this exercise in the past in your city, and your numbers are a little bit more, are, are a little stronger than they have been in previous, uh, iterations of this question. Second, um, there are a couple of items that have scored highly because of where we are now, both in terms of the health emergency, the, in a sense, a pandemic, which is clearly a disaster, and the economic decline, uh, not only in your city, but throughout, uh, Ca, California, the US and the world. And the lead items are maintaining fire, public safety, and emergency health response, uh, maintaining disaster preparedness response. And I wanted to then point out that the values of your voters in 2019 remain the values of today. Protecting creeks from pollution scored very high in your 2019 survey. It continues to score high. Preserving open space and natural areas, an item that's extremely important, I know, to the city, scores also very high. And retaining local businesses has risen in importance for the reasons that you have discussed previously in this council meeting. And of course, uh, homelessness prevention programs. And there are, we tested, uh, a series of additional social safety net, net programs. If you can go to the next slide, and here are some, uh, additional examples, um, that, uh, you can see. And, and I know everyone, uh, has access to this, so I'm going to, to move on and happy to answer any questions later on. Can we go to the next slide, please? So the initial vote, that was just ballot title and summary. You saw earlier a few times, it was 71 yes, 23 no, 6% undecided. After talking about what the, what the money could be used for, remember, it couldn't promise, you can't promise anything, as well as some educational statements, basically telling the story of the needs in your community, we re-asked that ballot question you saw earlier. And the vote was 75 yes, 20 no, 5% undecided. The yes moved up 4%, but the definitely yes moved up 6%. It's an excellent, excellent place to be after education, because you've now moved additional soft voters into the definitely yes camp. And notice, remember, I'm looking for, I'm expecting a floor of definitely no at 20%. You're at 13%. Now, of course, we haven't said anything critical. But then we went back to the voter, to, to the respondent, and we mentioned some critical statements that folks in the community could say, because we needed to have a fair and balanced survey, because ultimately, um, you need to know the goods and the bads before you deliberate. And that you, hopefully, you'll use this as one important data point among many data points that you've collected over, uh, your listening time with your community and just your knowledge about good public policy and the need for finances. After the critical statements, when we re-asked the ballot question and those critical statements talked about, it's not the right time to raise taxes and waste and inefficiency, something we hear in every city, every government agency, not unique to yours, and I'm sure you've heard it over time. We re-asked that ballot question. Your support drops to 67%, but 40% say definitely yes. The total no, that is that, is a little bit more than a quarter. The definitely no never reaches that 20% that I expected to see initially, and it certainly, I expect it after critical statements, it's not there. And I'll remind you that the no side needs 50% to defeat this measure. The yes side needs 50-plus-one. And knowing that the margin of error is plus or minus 4.9, so let's say, for easy math, five points, you're at 72 or you're at 62. And if we want to be super conservative, let's only look at the definitely and probably. And there, you're at 68 or you're at 58. And so if you continue to educate in a legally permissible way, um, and, uh, you think about the kinds of things that could be, uh, funded, but of course you can't promise, and match them up, sync them up with your community, I believe my recommendation is that this can be a viable measure. And, um, last slide, please, and then I'll have conclusions. I wanted to compare it to your 2019 survey to show you where you've come. So I take in everyone who said definitely, probably, or lean yes in all three votes that I asked, and I made the blue, that's that solid blue bar. I took everyone who said definitely, probably, or lean no, and I made them red. Uh, that's that solid total no bar. And the undecided are the gray. So you'll notice in 2019, if you look on the left-hand side, we had an initial vote, vote after education, and vote after critical statement. And you'll see the pattern. In June of 2020, the most recent survey, same deal. Initial vote, vote after education, and vote after critical statement. Notice the gap in 2019 after critical statement. It is a 28% gap between total yes and total no. How did I get that? I subtracted 60 from 32, and I get a 28% gap. Notice the gap in 2020. It's a 30-point, uh, gap, uh, 40-point gap, sorry, 40-point gap. 67 minus 27. So your, the gap between yes and no has broadened with your education and with the needs of the city, which voters have recognized in greater percentages in this survey. And finally, to the conclusion slide, if you can go past one more. Only two in 10 expect the pandemic will be under control in the six, in six months. More than double expect it to be in, in control within a year, but not a majority. Majorities do not expect the local economy to have recovered either in six months or 12 months. About one quarter are extremely or very concerned about their personal financial situation as a result of the virus. Next slide, please. Almost seven in 10 perceive the city as a great or some need for additional funds to provide the level of city services and infrastructure that residents need and want, that's up 10 points from 2019. Initially, about seven in 10 support Measure G at the 1.5 cent rate increase, with slightly less than four in 10 having said definitely yes. Maintaining fire, public safety, and emergency health response, maintaining disaster preparedness response, and protecting creeks from pollution are among a long list of voter prior, priorities for this measure. And they are, in many ways, very much along the law, in line with council and staff priorities. Next slide, please. After education, overall support increases to 75%. I'll remind you, this is a 50-plus-one measure, with 44% having said they would definitely vote yes. After critical statements, support declines eight percentage points to 2/3, with four in 10 having said definitely yes. Statistically above the margin of error for this simple majority measure. Again, it would be my recommendation for the council, the council to consider placing on this ballot, if, if you consider the other data points, uh, appropriate. And, uh, with that, I am, uh, finished my part of the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bernard. Uh, I know that we've had a lot of slides, and I have a few more. But there's a lot of information in your agenda report for tonight, and we just want to make sure that we highlight some of the important pieces of it. And then, of course, we'll be able, uh, to answer any questions that you might have. So the first thing that, uh, I want to do is talk a little bit about, um, the existing half-cent local revenue measure. That's our existing half-cent local general sales tax that was referenced in that ballot measure language that you looked at from Dr. Bernard. Just as a reminder for everyone, that was originally passed in 2006 with 64% of voters, and then was renewed again in 2014 by 70% of voters. At that time, in 2014, there is also the addition of a new advisory body, the Revenue Enhancement Oversight Commission, or also referred to as the REOC, uh, with a charge to oversee both the budget and expenditures of that measure. As a reminder for everyone about what the REOC is, it's a five-member citizen advisory board. They have a number of different responsibilities that are articulated directly in the city's municipal code. That includes creating an annual community report, renewing, uh, I'm sorry, reviewing an annual audit, holding an annual citizen oversight meeting, and making budget recommendations directly to the city council for the use of local revenue measure funds. Uh, we have led, um, uh, the facilitation of that group out of our department since it was created and has delivered on all of those items. All of the annual community reports are available on the city's website at www.slocity.org/budget. In addition, specific to the REOC, this council did ask for that group to make a recommendation on tonight's item, that's extending and increasing the local revenue measure. And on June 30th, that group met, uh, and recommended that the council, uh, place a ballot measure on the November 3rd election to extend the existing local general sales tax or local revenue measure at a 1.5 cent rate until ended by voters, should the most recent survey, uh, so, show support for such a measure. And you just had that report from Richard. And then one final, uh, piece to mention as it relates to citizen oversight, you'll see in the ordinance for tonight's item, its attachment B, is that the REOC would continue to play this oversight role for any additional funds that would be generated from an increase to the local revenue measure. Next slide. There are also a variety of reports and studies that are referenced or included as a part of tonight's item, and I just want to take a num, uh, just take a moment to highlight some of the key elements of those. Um, these are, uh, different reports we've worked on over the course of the last year. These are different reports we've worked on over the course of the last year. And I think it's really a part of the city's due diligence process that we were completing this information and providing it to the council and the public as a part of bringing this item forward. So we see it as a part of the overall package that both the public needs to be able to be aware of and the city council in terms of weighing the decision for tonight. The first is the fiscal health response plan. You've heard about this already, but again, this was the city's response to what was previously prior to COVID. The most significant financial challenge facing the city related to employee pensions. It was tackled head on, the plan was adopted in two thousand and eighteen. Again, the key components of that employee paying, employees paying more for their retirement costs, significant operational reductions and efficiencies for our organization, and then additional revenue through the cannabis business tax. The second piece that's important to highlight is our two thousand and twenty benchmark study. This was last completed in two thousand and fourteen and again, was a part of that due diligence process in advance of considering at that time, the renewal of measure Y into measure G. It looks at the city across a number of different financial metrics and service outcomes with comparable cities across a number of different criteria that are enumerated in that report. If you take a look at the report, the short story is effectively that the city is performing at or within the median for the majority of the comparisons that are looked at as a part of that report. And then the final piece that I just want to highlight is the two thousand and nineteen retail sales analysis. Again, this was last completed in two thousand and fourteen and provides an important data point for the council and community to consider, and that is the percent of sales tax paid by non-residents. I do think it's important to note, of course, that this information was based on two thousand and nineteen data, which was a most recent data that we had available. And it did show that seventy percent, approximately seventy percent of every dollar that the city collects in sales tax is paid for by non-residents. We do recognize that certainly this figure has shifted in light of the COVID reality, but we believe over the long term that this number will return. Next slide. I'd like to make sure that we review some of the different procedures that are included as a part of tonight's action relative to potentially placing a community services and investment measure on the ballot. We'll talk a little bit about the ballot measure language. Dr. Bernard alluded to it a bit and we'll provide what the final recommended ballot measure language is, talk a little bit about and some of the different analyses and also arguments and rebuttals, and then ultimately the timeline associated with each of those. So next slide. This is the ballot measure language recommended to you as a part of your agenda packet this evening and via the council ad hoc subcommittee on this topic. A couple of things, as was previously mentioned, there's a seventy five word limit for both the title that you see there and the description for the ballot question. And as you'll note, it is very similar to what was used for the most recent survey, except for a few minor changes. I do think this is an important item to pause on. I'm just going to briefly read that so that everyone is clear on the question that's being asked of voters. Shall an ordinance to provide funding to protect City of San Luis Obispo's financial stability, maintain fire, community safety, health, emergency, disaster preparedness, protect creeks from pollution, address homelessness, keep public areas clean, safe, retain local businesses, maintain youth, senior services, streets, open space, natural areas and other general services by extending voter approved funding at a one point five cent rate, providing approximately twenty one million, six hundred thousand annually until ended by voters requiring audits, all funds used locally be adopted. So again, that falls within the considerations and limitations that we've got based upon information that we have gleaned not only through the statistically valid survey, but through all of the other different education and engagement efforts that we've undertaken with our community to identify what is most important to our community at this time. Next slide. There are a couple of other items that are important to highlight, the ordinance and also the resolutions. The ordinance is an amendment, so we have an existing chapter three point one five of our municipal code that governs that existing half cent sales tax. This would be introducing, not to be finally approved until after the election, but introducing the amendments to that. And basically what those amendments would do, and they're detailed in the report, is extend the existing half cent general sales tax and increase it by one cent for a total of one point five cents until ended by voters. So that is all the different changes that are included in that basically reflect that change. There is also a couple of different resolutions. They do a couple of things. One, a resolution that will direct the city attorney to create an impartial analysis of the measure that'll be included in voter materials and also establishes procedures for written arguments, both for and against the measure, as well as rebuttals to those arguments. Next slide. This is the timeline associated for all of those items. The impartial analysis from the city attorney is due by five P M. on July twenty third. Primary arguments for or against a measure are due by five P M. on July thirty first. And then August seventh is the last day to file rebuttal arguments to those arguments for or against. And that kicks off a ten day public review period, which would end on August seventeenth. And then finally, there is mention made of education and outreach. Staff does have the ability, consistent with what is legally allowed, to provide information to the public. And we intend to continue to do that as we are able to. That can take the form of a variety of different things, but effectively we would be continuing to provide a public information as we have, answering frequently asked questions, information on how to vote by mail, giving that importance in the upcoming election information, continuing to update information on the city's website and responding to requests for presentation or additional information. I do want to note that if the council should want us to adopt a different approach, that we welcome direction at this time with respect to that. And with that, we will end with the recommendations that we started with, receiving the report on the slow forward effort to date, consideration of a ballot measure to be submitted to voters for the November third general election. And if I could have the next slide, please. The ordinance that would place the measure on the ballot and then the different resol, and the amendments to our existing ordinance, three point one five, and then the resolutions preparing the impartial analysis, arguments for, against and rebuttal arguments. With that, we have myself, Ryan, Derek and Dr. Bernard available to answer any questions.
Thank you so much, Greg. Do we have any questions from our colleagues? Councilmember Christensen?
Hi, thank you. I don't have a big, a big bunch here, but just a couple of questions that I think are in the staff report, but I wanted to kind of double check in public about them. And the first one is about the expected revenues from the, if this measure were to go into effect. And I just want to make sure that those projections are basically based on our current understanding of what's going on with our economy, that we're not over projecting. I understand obviously if time goes on and things get better, the amount of money we get will hopefully also go up, but we're not over promising. We are basing those projections on kind of our current understanding of how the economy is.
Correct. So obviously this is a bit of a dynamic time, but it is based upon the most recent information that we have to make that projection.
Okay, good. I expected that, but I just wanted to make sure that was clear. And then the other important thing, which I think you've touched on in the staff report, but I don't know if you mentioned it here in your oral report, is that like our measure G funds, these funds can still not be taken away by the state or the feds. They can't come back and grab that money away from us like they can with our D and B money and that kind of stuff. Is that correct?
Correct. These funds are protected for local use.
Okay, just that's all I want to do is just make sure those important to, those are important things for me to understand. Thanks.
City clerk, do we have any public comment?
Yes, we do. The first person is Jessica Steely. And your mic is unmuted.
Good day. Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Hello, Mayor Harmon and the council members. My name is Jessica Steely and I'm the co-owner of Sems and Company Builders. And I'm also pleased to say I'm the chair elect for the San Luis Obispo Chamber of Commerce. As the board, we've been discussing this issue for some time, weighing if this is the right structure, the right time and the right way to accomplish our goals. In our final discussion and a unanimous vote, it was clear that direct aid to businesses, expansion and preservation of our signature open spaces and the ability to bond against this revenue and fund those big ticket infrastructure improvements could be served through the slow forward sales tax with the property, with the proper community engagement and oversight. Some of the key elements that convinced me include self reliance and local control. Neither Washington or Sacramento is positioned to help us. We have to help ourselves and control over how the revenue is spent would be entirely in the hands of locals. Strict accountability. The Revenue Enhancement Oversight Committee has done a great job, but I believe that giving preference to business applicants and creating a routine strategic plan will ensure money is sent in alignment with dynamic community priorities. The fact that visitors pay their fair share. As mentioned, historically more than seventy percent of sales tax has been paid by visitors, not residents. And a sales tax will ensure that visitors pay their use for our city. The long term benefits. As mentioned earlier, the structure will enable the city to issue bonds to support the needed improvement in water, security, traffic improvements and climate action. And finally, help for employees and employers. Local businesses need to survive this pandemic to recover. And the cities need healthy businesses as much as the businesses need a healthy city. This is an opportunity to do more than we've ever done and to move forward and to do it together. So tonight I urge you to place this measure on the ballot and to make a few improvements to bolster the oversight of the potential revenue. Thank you for your time.
Okay, our next speaker is Jim Dantona. Your mic is unmuted.
Hello, Mayor Harmon and council members. It's Jim Dantona and I'm speaking to you today on behalf of the Slow Chamber of Commerce. As an organization that represents nearly fourteen hundred businesses, we've thought obviously long and hard about the potential slow forward sales tax measure, including gathering more than eighty of our volunteer advisors since March. There have been task force meetings, discussions amongst our board and executive committee and countless conversations where we explored this measure, as Jessica was just mentioning, the future we envisioned for this city and what it will take to get there. Our board, as she stated, was unanimously supportive of the slow forward sales tax measure you are considering tonight as it would support long term community and economic health. And forward, a number of priorities outlined in Imagine Slow, including investments in retaining our local businesses, key infrastructure, acquisition and preservation of open space, vibrant neighborhoods, and enable the city to maintain a high level of service delivery. One of the key takeaways from our conversations on this measure was the need for increased accountability. The city's Revenue Enhancement Oversight Committee has served admirably, and we believe that with a few tweaks, the REOC can provide that accountability. As highlighted by our letter that was submitted earlier, we would like to see the council prioritize some business representation on that oversight committee and the creation of a strategic plan for revenue spending that is reevaluated and updated every eight years. One of the most promising opportunities for this measure is the ability to bond against it for significant large scale projects. But there's also a necessity to convene periodic community discussions about what those priorities look like in practice. The REOC would be well suited to lead a strategic priority update that would increase engagement and understanding while empowering the community to be a part of a building, build the spending plan. The revenue from this sales tax, seventy percent of which has historically been paid by visitors to our community, can help with the recovery in the near term and support community and economic health for decades to come. Over our lifetime, we have never experienced a threat as menacing to our lives and our livelihoods as this pandemic. But even in my short time here, I have seen San Luis Obispo pulled together to solve daunting challenges. Now more than ever, we clearly see the interdependence of business, government, community and public health and must once again pull together and invest in our community and our shared future. As Jessica said, it's up to us, not Sacramento or Washington, D.C., to put in the hard work and commitment to help our business and residents rebound and come out the other side stronger and more resilient. We look forward to you supporting to putting this on the ballot and thank you so much.
Thank you for that.
That was our last speaker.
Okay, thank you, city clerk. Just for the community sake who might be watching, I pretty, I know myself, and I'm guessing all of my colleagues have had some pretty significant conversations with staff as we've delved into all the details of this, we've had a lot of questions. And this has been a fairly long and well informed, I would say, conversation. And so don't think that the, maybe the lack of questions or robust conversation indicates that we haven't all been thinking about this significantly. Councilmember Stewart, I'm sorry, please.
Great, thank, thank you so much and thank you for that background. Clearly, as noted in the staff report, councilmember Stewart and I are bringing this forward as a, as a recommendation. And it's been a very thorough, interesting, collaborative, integrated kind of process that I'm really, I'm really proud of our city for the way that we've engaged and used this opportunity to really, you know, tighten our own fiscal position before we could even feel like we could come to voters again, that this was, this was about being able to make sure that we understood our, our finances, our obligations, how we could prioritize what we need to do and then be able to look to the community and say, what are your hopes and dreams? And what we heard coming back from the community is it's not extravagant. I feel like what we're saying is we want to be able to maintain this great quality of life. We want to move forward with our kind of the bright future that we know we can achieve with the, with the improvements and the priorities that are coming forward. So I'm super excited about this. I'm grateful that the, that the, how the community has responded as indicated in the, in the survey. So, so absolutely supportive of all of these pieces. I do want to make sure that we talk about the specific suggestions from the chamber. Oh, and, and before we do that, it just, I realize that I, I don't actually know when the effective date of the expanded sales tax, would that be April one? Is that when it would take effect? Does, does somebody do the math on that?
It's, it's after, it's a hundred and ten days after the final adoption of the ordinance. So typically that's around the springtime, certainly anytime after April one is usually when it takes effect. And it depends on, yeah.
That, that's what I thought. So April of next year sometime is some springtime. Okay, just want to make sure. And so in terms of the, the specific makeup of the REOC, I think that was an appropriate point. And just in general, the committee makeup, we could even expand to align with our other priorities where we talk about, their suggestion is that when recruiting members, the city will seek members and, and previously had talked about the professional experience with finance and budgeting or municipal accounting. They suggest adding a sales tax generating business. I think that also makes sense. I think we could even say we'll seek members with a diversity of background and experience and we'll balance with representatives who meet one or more of the following categories. I feel like the REOC, you know, in some ways I think we'll need to have some kind of like a, an open, I don't know if it's a study session or just a workshopping with REOC and really kind of think about if this, if this moves forward, if we place it on the ballot and it passes, it's a lot, it's a, it's a much bigger chunk of our budget that we're going to be kind of asking REOC to be participating on. And so I think that consideration of, of the makeup to make sure it has those diverse voices that we're looking at with our lens of economic recovery and resiliency and addressing current economic inequality. So, so I'm, I'm supportive of the inclusion of the, of a sales tax revenue generator as well as just expanding that overall. And then, and then that kind of leads into, and I'd love to get some feedback from council and staff in terms of the strategic plan, you know, does an eight year cycle make sense? Seems pretty relevant overall. I'm supportive of kind of doing some of that long, long term planning. I'm supportive of kind of doing some of that long, long-term planning. We certainly have a five-year forecast already on our capital improvement. So maybe there's just kind of a more inclusive process about that. And then, you know, really being able to embrace REOC's role without having it skid into too much responsibility when they're not, you know, they're appointed, not elected. So just want to make sure that accountability carries through. That's, those are my comments.
Thank you so much for that, Andy. I just want to sort of chime in and say too, how, having talked with so many small business owners over the last few weeks in particular, how important some funding to keep, to retain what's essential to our community and those local, locally-owned small businesses is so exciting to think about. So I'm super hopeful that this moves forward and that the community supports us as, as it sounds like they're really ready to do for so many reasons. But I think for me in particular, the support of the local small business owner is so key right now. And so hopefully we can create some funding to be able to lift them into the next phase of this incredibly unprecedented challenge. Councilmember Stuart, did I see your hand? Go ahead.
Thank you. I too want to echo Andy's comments. I mean, Dr. Bernard and all of the staff spent so much time and put up with our many, many questions. But I really do feel it was a very collaborative process. And, you know, as you, you see this presentation, you can't imagine the amount of questions behind and the statistics behind that Dr. Bernard has. The concept of having a preference towards a sales tax generating business, I like that idea for the REOC. I definitely don't want to put a seat. I don't want to start to say, this must be a business member. So I think it's important that we have someone that has experience and knowledge, but it doesn't necessarily mean they have to be in a business right now to have that seat. That would be, be my thought. And I'm definitely curious about the feedback from the staff about the eight years. Cause I look at, we do the whole dotocracy every two years, whatever that continues to look like. And it's very comprehensive. So I just am curious, I know we kind of combined the REOC at different times there and our report. Is an eight-year process in addition to what we do really necessary? Or is there a way to, as Councilmember P said, to kind of include something additional as a factor versus a whole new process?
Maybe Madam Mayor, we can, if we could field some answers, maybe at the very end, we're happy to do that. And we're taking notes, I think Greg and Ryan and I are taking notes.
Sounds good. Councilmember Christensen?
Yes, thank you. And I do want to thank Councilmember P and Councilmember Stuart for all of your work. I remember a lot of our council meetings where you were talking about having to get together the next day or the next couple of days for your REOC meetings. And half the time I was in, in City Hall, you were, you were there having a REOC, not a REOC meeting, a ad hoc meeting around, around this issue. So thank you so much for all that time. And I know it's really above and beyond the call of duty as well as the efforts by staff and our consultant here and, and the REOC committee itself. I really, really, really appreciate it because as Derek noted, some of this effort has been going on for the last five years. And I'm certainly very familiar with it, but getting down to the nitty-gritty of actually pulling, pulling the trigger, as it were, on it, it, it's, it's a big responsibility. And I appreciate you taking that on. I, I do want to make the comment around the data presented by Dr. Bernard that it's really encouraging to see our community so involved with, you know, not only naming their own concerns, but just being, I think, a lot more aware of how government, you know, does influence community and help the community move along. And certainly, you know, it's interesting to see the data from, you know, last summer to this summer. And since then, our, our city has seen, you know, huge wildfire fires, public safety power shut-offs, obviously a pandemic, and, you know, economic downturn, if not a disaster. We've had huge efforts around diversity, equity, and inclusion, anti-racism efforts. So we've really gotten a lot more aware of the interplay between, you know, what government can and should do, but how it needs to do it with the community. And, and this is, this is getting down to the, a really specific way that, that government can help, but the community needs to help too by supporting, supporting this, this tax, tax effort. And as the other folks have said, I'm obviously been, been very supportive of it. I don't really see how we could function as a city to do any of the things we want to do without it. And, and so, yeah, it's, I'm, I'm very supportive of placing this on the ballot. The REOC stuff, I know that's kind of a separate thing. It doesn't actually go on the ballot. It's already, it's separately created through our, through its own enabling ordinance. So that doesn't, we don't have to, that, that isn't important for the actual ballot language. But I, I agree with Councilmember Stuart's nuanced talk about a sales tax business being on the, on the commission itself. I, I don't want to start naming seats. This is the open space seat. This is the, you know, sales tax seat. Everybody pays sale tax. So I understand that it affects businesses in a way that's different from the way it affects consumers. But we all know about sales tax. I think it's certainly, it would be very good to include that as a, as a, you know, special knowledge or experience. I think it's probably because this is, you know, being spent on a lot of things. Even though the money all comes from sales tax, it's being spent on a lot of things. So I, in my mind, we're, we're going back to what we talked about. We want to really be looking at everything through a diversity, equity, and inclusion lens. We want to make sure that we're not only on the issues of race, but on the issues of who, who is on there in general. So that's to me more important, that we get people who understand city budgets in some way or can be educated to that and then have a, have a pretty broad and diverse viewpoint. And then as far as the strategic plan, I think strategic plans are great. I, if there's a, I'm not really sure how a strategic plan for a REOC differs from the council and the city's strategic plan. I mean, so I don't want to, I don't want to have the REOC becoming the, you know, the budget masters of the city. That is an incredibly important responsibility of the elected council. And so yes, if there's a, if there's some kind of a long, longer-term planning that would be useful, that isn't already being done in some way, I don't have any objections to it. But I, I know we talked about this briefly in my, my one-on-ones with staff and I went away thinking about, it sounded like a great idea, but then I started, kind of really started thinking about it and thinking, I don't really get what a REOC strategic plan would look like. So I'm not opposed to it, but I, I would just want to have a better idea of what we're talking about. I don't want to duplicate stuff. Or as Councilmember Stuart and P said, put a burden on, onto them that isn't, isn't appropriate or isn't, isn't useful. So that's, that's my comments.
Thank you.
So, so Madam Mayor, if that's the, if there's no other comments, I didn't know if we heard from Councilmember Gomez. I don't want to interject unless you're ready for staff.
I mean, I did want to make a couple of comments. I won't go into the whole thing, but more about the REOC and the position for a tax-paying member from a business standpoint. I, I think it needs to be highlighted, but that is an important perspective that seems to be somewhat being discounted in this conversation by not wanting to make that a specific position as much as everybody pays tax, sales tax. Brick-and-mortar businesses have a very unique perspective on how it affects their business directly, especially a tax like this. We, and me being a small business owner, we do have a perspective that the general population does not on this. Whether or not we want to set aside an actual seat for that, I, I would be supportive of that. But if they're not, we need to, I would hope that whoever is signing REOC members understands the importance of that voice.
Erin, can you say a little bit more about that? Cause I'm obviously a small business owner, but I'm not a sales tax generating.
Yes, and I, I want to know how, I mean, I understand perfectly why it's super important to understand what businesses, sales tax-paying businesses feel about imposing the tax. But in terms of spending the tax, that's the part I don't quite get. Why, do you understand that question?
I understand the question and that's what, if you're, if you're wanting a diverse opinion from the public and you're, you're understanding the company that it's coming, that it's generated from and how it affects their business, I would venture to say they've got a probably unique perspective on how they would want to see it also utilized in a way that they understand the benefit and can give you a, an opinion on how it can also help them as a business. As we talked earlier, maintaining the character of San Luis Obispo is also maintaining the small brick-and-mortar businesses of this town. And that right now, as, based on what I'm seeing, this is going to be changed for our businesses for a long time. And now we are proposing a possible tax, which then will help or hurt depending on where we spend those funds.
Okay, I, that's, that's helpful. Thank you, Erin.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Erin, councilmembers, I can jump in and just add a few comments from the staff perspective. If that's okay, Derek.
Yeah, let me just, let me just jump in, maybe just do a little bit of framing here because I think there's some bigger things I just want to just inject, like just, just for a moment. I think, you know, one of the things that I think we've talked about as a council and as an organization kind of is the art of the long view and how do we incorporate the long view? And we've done that so well in all of our planning documents. And I think, you know, from my perspective, and I think this goes to Councilmember Christensen's question is, you know, I think scenario and strategic planning is a function of kind of good imagination. And for the first time, we're, we're not going to be burdened and saddled by an eight-year cycle, but we will be able to really start to make some more in-depth, I think, fundamental foundational investments in our community that otherwise weren't available. I think some of the speakers spoke to that in terms of how do we access perhaps debt markets that we haven't been able to access in the past because we've been limited by an eight-year sunset. I think we're able to fund ideas that I think put alignment with our funding, with the plans that we have. And I do think, you know, that a strategic planning process can be a facilitated set of the conversations that's organized around existing planning efforts, you know? And so the things that you've already agreed upon, your general plan, your, your parks and recreation element, I think they can do some legwork in terms of how to fund those things in a, in a strategic way and ultimately frame them up and help illuminate, as many of your advisory bodies do, some of the key financial decisions so they can do some of that legwork for you. Of course, it's ultimately up to the city council to approve that. It's your strategy, it's your budget. You can't legislate away that authority. That needs to reside with, with the city council. With respect to, you know, the eight-year cycle, I think we can figure out ultimately what is the right way to sync it up with our financial planning process. And so I think we would want to spend some time aligning that with the budget process rather than create a new process. And perhaps then if we agree upon a framework for strategic planning, how does that then play into it? I do think that the chamber and others have offered a good suggestion in terms of a sales tax generator. I think we would benefit as staff to be able to hear that perspective from the brick-and-mortar. You know, it was certainly very illuminating recently as we went through COVID-19. Just, you know, the, the, the mere loans that were made from the state to brick-and-mortar in terms of delayed payment of sales tax and all the machinations that go into that. So I think that that perspective is of a very important value. And then last, before I turn it over to Greg, I did the quick calculation on the, using the Excel calculator and 110 days from November 3rd is February 21st, 2021. So that's the effective date that this would go in the, in the place should the voters approve it as it's before you tonight.
But, but isn't it the first quarter after the start of a quarter? After the 100, whatever days? I thought I read that somewhere.
The first day of the first calendar quarter commencing more than 107. And yes, it would be, I'm sorry, yes, you're right, April 1st. So yeah, you're right.
Great. Thank you, Derek. And just a couple of other additional thoughts, but I think I, I certainly agree with all of those comments. So, you know, we're happy to receive direction from the council on this item. I think it would fall under 2.14 is the section of the municipal code that really designates the responsibilities and membership of the Revenue Enhancement Oversight Commission. 2.14020, Councilmember P's mentioned it, but the last sentence of that says, "When recruiting members, the city will seek members that have experience with finance, budgeting, or municipal accounting." And so we're happy to receive direction if that should be broadened and/or if there should be additional designations made for individual seats as, as with respect to that. And then getting in a little bit more of the points of the eight-year planning cycle, you know, in some ways, we're doing something similar already with the ballot measure language. So the ballot measure language, when we went from Y to G, the measure language for G set eight years effectively of spending priorities. And then the REOC looks at the different budget expenditures that we're proposing to the council and looks for alignment between those and those funding priorities that are, that are really derived from the ballot measure language and then ultimately can be approved by the city council. The major city goal process historically is focused on a little bit more of a short-term look at things. So they are areas that would receive additional attention in addition to the core services that we provide day in and day out over that two-year period. And I would say that the services and infrastructure that we've funded through the local revenue measure are actually geared a little bit more towards supporting a lot of the core services and implementing the long-term plans and policies that we've got in place that Derek spoke to. So I think that there is a way that we can incorporate those effectively and accomplish both an ability for the community to focus on shorter-term priorities, given what may be going on at that particular moment in time, but also have priorities set over the longer term and especially since the majority of the funding goes towards infrastructure. Quite frankly, there's sometimes some longer-term time horizons associated with some of those projects that can benefit from a, a longer focus.
And Madam Mayor, if I could just add a couple of comments. I think, you know, should council agree to this framework? I think any good strategic, strategic planning process, you know, should have, you know, four elements in terms of the planning process, you know, the implementation and then a check-in and then, you know, re-looking at the strategic plan. So I, I don't think it's a static document per se. And I think, you know, you would, you know, any good strategic planning process should be reevaluated in the strategic approach, you know, at least every two years in line with the budget process to make sure that it's still aligned, still relevant as you move forward.
Thank you so much, Derek. City Clerk, we've already done public comment. We've had, does anybody else, Erica Stewart?
So do we actually have to determine that REOC information right now?
Madam Mayor and Councilmember Stuart, we don't need to just determine that tonight. If it's the pleasure of the council, I would recommend that we come back at your August 18th meeting. And we could bring forward proposed ordinance changes that are conditional in nature, meaning that they only take effect should the voters approve the ordinance and the measure in, in the fall election.
Okay, thank you. All right, would someone like to make a motion?
I'm, oh, Karen. No, go ahead. Yeah, I'll, I'll go ahead and move the suite of recommendations with the amendments that were provided by agenda correspondence and with direction to staff to bring back at our August meeting further consideration of the makeup of the REOC membership to include someone representing a sales generating business and, and in consideration, and consideration of strategic planning strategies for use of those funds. Does that kind of cover it? All right, that's the motion. All right, that's the motion.
I'll second, and I just want to, you know, we're not saying this is, we're saying there's a, something we're putting on the ballot. The voter is still going to make that final decision, right? So I think that's the important part to remember is, so as I, as I see some of the correspondence come across even, even now during the meeting, it's, it's kind of assuming that everything's going to move forward in one direction or the other. And this is the beauty of the freedom of, of our country is being able to vote. So register and vote.
Good point.
City Clerk?
Councilmember Pease?
Yes.
Councilmember Stewart?
Yes.
Councilmember Christensen?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Gomez?
Yes.
Mayor Harmon?
Yes, and with that, it passes 5-0. Thank you, everybody, so much for that. Chief, I see here that your item is intended to take 30 minutes. I just, A, wanted to first of all confirm that timeline. And then secondly, ask my colleagues, it's 8:34, if they need to take a break or if they would like to just move forward with this item. So Chief, is it about 30 minutes, would you say, depending on?
Uh, yeah, I'm gonna, can you hear me?
Yes.
And five-minute break would be awesome.
Okay, great. Take a five-minute break and we will return at 8:40.
And then Teresa, can I put my, can I put the PowerPoint up now?
Yes, just one moment. There you go.
See it, Teresa?
I, I can see it, but you need to actually put it up. There you go.
Okay.
Good to go.
So it's just going to be me. James got called in to assist with PD and Alforque's there as well. So, so I'm going to cover the whole thing and I'll, I'll tell, I'll talk faster, James farts, so.
I'm sure you can handle it.
Yeah, it'll be fine.
Okay.
We were having a conversation. Thank you for your patience. Derek and I are maximizing the break. And now we will go to the business item before us to receive and file the Fire Department Annual Report and a 2021 Strategic Operational Plan. So Chief Axon and Deputy Fire Chief Michael Alforque, did I get that right, and Administrative Analyst James Blatter will please present the report.
Well, good evening, Mayor Harmon and City Council. Thank you so much for allowing us to provide our annual report. Actually, tonight, it's just going to be me. We sent James over as a PIO to assist PD and then Chief Alforque is also over at the Police Department supporting their operations this evening. So, so I'm going to try to, to get through it as quick as I can to kind of stay in time. I typically go to bed around nine, so I'm dragging a little bit myself here. I'm pretty, pretty thrilled tonight to be able to present the strategic plan as well as what we've accomplished this last, this last year with our annual plan. And we'll, we'll present that, we'll kind of go through some of the highlights, talk about some of the things we've accomplished, things that we've worked on within our strategic plan, where we're going for 2021. And then in, and then at the end, we'll give you an opportunity to ask any questions you may have. So I did want to start with COVID-19. If you haven't heard that enough, you know, we just wanted to kind of briefly jump in how it has affected our organization and really a lot of the, the work that we've been doing. We are the frontline and first-line responders and, you know, we initially seen a pretty significant drop in calls with COVID. However, we're really seeing a, an uptick. We're upwards in the 20-plus calls a day where we typically average about 16 and for various reasons. Also, in, in, in terms of COVID, you know, we opened up the EOC and that was 128 days ago. We opened our EOC and started responding to this. And typically in EOC activation, with the exception of a major earthquake with a lot of recovery, you know, is that one-to-two-week type operation. But this is really, you know, elongated and everybody's pulled together and done a great job. Within the Fire Department, we've had several key members that have been real supportive of the IEP, developing objectives and really supporting all the different functions of the EOC. With COVID, though, we had some direct delays in, in different programs and operations within our organization. So, you know, probably the biggest thing most recently is a year and a half ago, we had submitted to FEMA through the Emergency Management Institute to receive some training at a real high level, some high-level EOC training and the opportunity to take 75 individuals from our, our agency as well as allied agencies back to Emmitsburg to get this training. And we just weren't able to do that. But by the time it all worked out, we ended up having to cancel on them just in the last couple of weeks. We actually tried to bring them out here, but that didn't work. We are set to move back around in late November to see if we'll be on the 2021 schedule. And/or if that doesn't work, then we'll be set on the 2020 schedule. So we are pretty excited about that. It's neat to get that. They only award that to three cities nationwide each year. It's pretty competitive. Our diversity job fair that was scheduled for March was postponed. We're going to look to host that again March of 2021 if, if things start to settle down. And that was really bringing those different high school students as well as Cal Poly and bust students down to the station to meet the paramedics from San Luis Anlos, CHP, law enforcement, Cal Fire, our folks and really learn about emergency services and what job opportunities exist out there. So. And then lastly, just our public education, preparedness and safety. Our Prepare Slow that we started last year in 2019, we were carrying that into a March, June, September delivery format out in the community. We paused that as well as three ready, set, go programs we had scheduled kind of back-to-back-to-back in, in various areas in our community to really be able to push that message. Can everybody hear me? I can't see you. I can only see my screen. We're good?
Yeah, we're good.
Yeah, I'm good.
I hear you perfectly.
So just a couple of major accomplishments from fire administration. So we did bring Chief Alforque in. He came from Fresno Fire Department. A great deal of operational experience and leadership experience. He's done an excellent job in his new role. We're thankful to have him on board. He's been, he's really established great relationships throughout the, the city, especially during the EOC operations as he runs the fire branch for us. And he's done an amazing job with our staff in terms of taking our training plan, extending out a two-year training plan and really kind of regionalizing some of the things that we've been doing. We completed three major citywide policies. And so the, the local hazard mitigation plan, which just a couple of weeks ago was adopted, that was a grant process. Admin Blattler kind of represented the city. That was a, that was a, a city cooperative and collaborative operation to get that on board and we've, we've been able to get that through and we're really proud to have that done. We also spent almost upwards of a year working on an emergency operations plan and we delivered that about a month ago as well. And so we're glad to have that in place. We just started to do some training citywide and we've got much more training lined out. In addition to the annexes listed in there, we're nearly done with our pandemic annex of all things as well as our utilities annex. And that's really taken that public safety power shut-off information and putting it into a working annex for our EOP. So we're excited about that. And then we completed the Community Wildfire Protection Plan with different strategies. And that's a five-year plan and we've already implemented two of those strategies. Probably the biggest thing was our wildfire pre-mapping and pre-attack mapping for the entire city. And it's a, it's a really detailed map. If you come by the station, I'd love to show it to you. It's, it's got excellent information for all of our fire commanders in the event that we experience an urgent wildfire. And then lastly, Admin Blattler had offered up to be our Public Information Officer. He's done an amazing job really in the last eight months of all the things that he's brought on board. And that's one of the reasons that he was requested to assist PD this evening. He's done such a great job. In the corner, you see there, we've got a recorded news line. So that if we're out on an emergency in the field, we have the ability to push information to that news line and any of the media sources as well as the public can call in and get up-to-date information as to what's going on with that incident. In terms of major accomplishments for our emergency response, you know, we've continued to improve on our training. We've continued to improve in our, the service delivery. We've really had a big focus and a shift from what be just kind of general duties for our battalion chiefs to be very much more operationally specific. One of the big things is a few years ago, we, we obtained a grant for our UTV. We have a little Polaris Ranger we use for open space. This year alone, we had over 25 rescues utilizing that vehicle, which is really amazing and has worked really well for us. That was grant-funded. We also have just recently implemented an e-bike program. And that's a mountain bike program that we've got stationed out at Fire Station 4. And it's really for those single-track open space areas, the Johnson Ranch, Irish Hills, East Cal Poly, where we may have somebody go down and we're not able to get there via the UTV and the hiking would take a certain amount of time. The e-bike program works really well for our ability to get in there rapidly, make contact with the patient, render care, and then more importantly, make the determination how we're going to extract that patient from that location. Do we need to walk them out? Can we bring a Stokes basket? Do we need a helicopter? Because really time is of the essence with those traumatic-type calls. So we're pretty thrilled about that. And one of the unique things was that was actually a community donation to the, the local 3523, our union's Bear Foundation, which is their, their 503, 501C, I believe is what it is. And they were able to buy those, purchase those bikes and donate those back to the department. So we're really thankful for that. We successfully completed the probation of all seven of our new firefighters. And our peer support team has really been up and has been very active, not only supporting our individuals on major incidents and critical incident, stress-type incidents county-wide, but also just our COVID response. And one thing I wanted to point out, in Paso Robles about seven months ago, they had a firefighter son who was traumatically killed and unfortunately, and, and our peer members went up there and met with the families. They did some, some, some initial debriefing and support counseling. It was really amazing. They've done, they've done a great job with that program. We're very proud of them. For emergency preparedness, you know, that's the, the one division that we, we'd slacked for many years and we needed to put a lot of emphasis. And so we really leaned in hard this last year and working on our Prepare Slow, our new slogan for getting safety prevention and preparedness information out to our community. We've completely revamped our EOC in terms of, we had a kind of a reconfiguration. We had IT come in and help out so that when we activate our EOC, even though we're kind of in a crunched area here, that we have places for all of our key role members to be able to come in from our, from our EOC director being Derek to our finance folks, our logistics, our operations folks, everything already being pre-set up. So it's not a lot of work to get everything brought in and set up. Citywide FEMA training, we talked about that, where we're going to be looking at that in the, in the future since we've had to pause. And we recently have done some EOC drills and we're going to be doing some more EOC training for all of our staff and primarily for all of our lead positions. So our finance, operations, planning, logistics, the EOC director, all of the elected officials, you'll be getting trained. So training we had formally or previously scheduled, we've just postponed. We're looking at the fall and having those, those dates put in, the dates already put in place. It's just getting the training done and, and using some social distancing and what have you to be able to accomplish that. We, we leaned in really hard with the, the power, the public safety power shut-off. We really took the lead in the county with our continuity of operation plan. A lot of the other cities actually took our plan and were just erasing San Luis and putting their name in there. So we're super proud of not only what the plan, but the action that was taking place from utilities and public works in the Fire Department and really making some changes and being prepared as, as great as prepared as we could be in the event that something occurred. And then the last thing on there is File-A-Live, and that's really, you may have heard of File-A-Live. It's something that we used to do and it's kind of fallen off the last several years and we kind of instituted it. And so that if you've got a medical issue, you take medications and it, and you could be incapacitated when we responded to an emergency at your residence, is having the ability to gather that information up to know what your allergies might be, what medications you take, what medical history you may have to be able to carry that along with you up to the hospital. So really thankful for that program. Some other major accomplishments, you know, we replaced old Engine 3 with new Engine 3. It's a much more efficient diesel, very efficient diesel apparatus as well as its fire functions on there. So we have a, a bigger pump, we have much more room and capacity to carry more equipment. It's really well-suited for our needs and it still has a relatively short wheelbase. And then as well as our local, additionally with our local hazard mitigation plan is that we've adopted some of the climate action, some of the major city go climate action items into our local hazard mitigation plan. If I'm going too fast, just tell me to slow down. So some, some of the key statistics with our emergency response. So, let me get you one out here. There you go. So, you know, we noticed that overall we had a decrease in our fire calls. Overall, we had about a 5% increase in total number of calls. And that's for a wide variable of reasons, increase in population, a little slight increase at Cal Poly. But we also have an aging, we have an aging community as well. And so our, our runs popped up just a little bit. Our total fire incidents were only 127 and our transient-related fires was only 26. And we're going to come back to a specific slide because I know that was a question that we, that we faced last year and we didn't have a lot of good data or information and we're going to be able to provide you a little bit more of this evening. We had 340 responses to Cal Poly as well as we had about 404 off-campus contacts with Cal Poly students, not to mention about 197 with Busta College. Our total response time, so the total response time from an operator receiving a call, dispatcher dispatching it, the turnout time of our personnel and then response time from their, their location to the incident. You know, our goal is, is 90% of the time, our drive time to be four minutes or a total of seven minutes. Last year, we were at 76%. We've slightly fallen down to 72.1% of those emergency-type calls. When we look at what that could be, it's maybe a combination of, you know, road construction, increased population. And then also we noted that multiple times throughout the year, we had dual companies training here because of our probationary firefighters and would create a, a distance for, if Engine 4 was here training and they got a call in their district. So we're really going to be kind of diving down and looking at that. We're looking at our, our immediate turnout times right now for each shift in each company monthly as to what that looks like to see if we can, you know, hold that. One thing I hold, at least hold that number if not improve it. I do want to point out, we have the best response times in the county of all agencies, including County Fire. So we are a little bit under our goal and we're going to do again that root, root cause analysis. Our training, though, was considerably up. It was up almost 44% and primarily for, I'd say, three reasons. One, that we brought in some outside instruction through state fire training as well as some of our wildland classes to support our operations, not only out in mutual aid-type responses, but for major incidents we can have in the city. We ran our Fire Academy and at the end of the Fire Academy, which was getting into the, the new fiscal year or this new year, also had a lot of probationary training. And so we were doing a great deal of training with our probationary firefighters, which is good for everybody in the organization. And then lastly, we were doing a lot of joint shift and regional training with other agencies, with Cal Fire, Five Cities, Moore Bay, as, as well as County Fire Department. So that's really increased our, our numbers as well as we have that new training plan I mentioned earlier. So getting specifically to the transient-related fires, you know, we really wanted to dive down and we worked collaboratively with PD so that, you know, a lot of times they're complaint-based. Unless we get a response for an out-of-control fire, we don't always know when there's fires in primarily the creek areas. And so if we get that complaint base, we've been working directly with PD to assure that we're policing that area and then we're having our, our battalion chiefs also, you know, for the, for a period of time, checking those areas as well. So, you know, making contact with those individuals, making sure they're extinguishing their fires. And what I want to point out is, you know, there's a, a small range of fires there or small numbers with the exception of trash and rubbish. And trash and rubbish also falls under just kind of warming fires. So it falls under that, that same category. So when we, we're using the NIFER system or National Fire Incident Reporting System for how we report all of our information and we're required to do that, that's where we collect all of those warming-type fires. So, you know, we did have quite a few. I, I would believe that we probably have 10 times more than what, than we have on the screen here because it's, again, it's complaint-based and it's when we see it and we locate it. We had no escape fires this year, which we're very fortunate for. And we've really had, we've had a lot of great conversations with Chief Cantrell and her staff that we need to be very proactive in, in going after those transient-related type fires. So for hazard prevention, not a real big increase. We, we did increase the number of inspections by about 8%. Overall, our fire and safety inspections were, were down a little bit for general commercial occupancies. Our building plan and development plan reviews were down and that's really, that's the, from the building community. So it's what comes in is what we're reviewing. We've really emphasized our turnaround time to keep our turnaround time within that 30-day. Oddly enough, with COVID, with some of our individuals, we've got our staff split right now 50/50 working from home and, and rotating days so that we're, we're trying to, you know, limit the amount of exposure. We've actually seen a real increase in the number of plans we're getting done by several, several of our inspectors. So that's been really. So that's been really great. Uh, twenty one fire investigations, we also had twenty one last year, so that was pretty flat. And then the state mandated, uh, inspections, we've been doing those for about ten years. So although that was a new mandate, uh, after the Go Ship fire in Oakland, um, it's required all fire departments to do any of the apartment complexes, the hotels, motels, for example, um, we've already been doing those all along. So we've continued to do those. And then one of the unique things that we did mid-year was we split our fire marshal. So now we share him with community development as a chief building official. So it's a fifty fifty split. It's worked out pretty well. It's about a little bit more workload for our prevention staff, but they're, they're really handling it well. They're doing a good job. So kind of recapping our strategic plan in, um, and, and where we've been and where we're going. Um, you know, we just, we want to bring out for the, the second year, forty two percent of the identified strategies uh, have been completed of the five-year plan. And we're going to highlight just a couple of those. So revisiting the community disaster preparedness, you know, we, we really dove in and, and that was a priority. So it, it was the NIMs training for all of our staff personnel. It's the E O P, it was new wildfire protection plan, the local hazard mitigation plan. It was prepare slow. And then that prepare slow, you know, coming out with hard copied information on a super wide range of safety preparedness and prevention topics that we're really proud of. We've got a really nice display here of hard copies that you can pick up. You can go to our website and you can gather information from there. And then in addition to it, what we've been slowly doing is adding videos, not only of our organization and all of our operational staff and the equipment, but we've also been, uh, adding, you know, preparedness videos, power safety shut off videos. Um, uh, uh, how to be, you know, your seventy two hour kit, for example. Um, overall generally well received. When we did our prepare slow last year, um, you know, we only had fifty five community members come out after really advertising it heavy. Just recently, because we weren't able to do our ready, set, go, we did a webinar. Um, and you know, unfortunately, we only had about ten people participate in the webinar. It is up on our website. You're welcome to watch. It's about an hour long. Uh, we think it's, it's really good, but then again, we're the ones that were putting it on. So, uh, but we intend to continue to do that, um, with earthquakes, with flooding, with, uh, open space, uh, hiking, working with parks and rec and, and providing those type of webinars, those videos, uh, so that, you know, somebody can always grab them up, they want more information and, uh, and to, to kind of hear it firsthand, so to speak. Uh, we partnered with the downtown association to improve the, uh, farmer's market and really the fireside and to collaborate with them and how we can to improve the safety of the, the different booths and the vendors down there. So we came up with a really nice checklist. Um, we worked, uh, uh, hand in hand with downtown association to get that signed off and get that approved. Uh, and so that went really well and that was completed. Um, and then our regional mitigation plan, again, that was a grant project uh, led by, um, admin Blattler. He did a wonderful job on it. We're really thrilled and that was a cumulative, um, a collaborative effort of several departments uh, from community to, uh, community development. Who else? Public Works, uh, several different departments in coming up with that, uh, with that program. So we're, we're, we're excited about that plan now being implemented. Uh, in addition, uh, we looked just to really explore, uh, a train, good training opportunities. So we worked with the Past Robles Fire Department, chose some state fire chief officer, a fire officer, chief officer and exec, executive chief officer classes. They held some of them up in Past Robles. We sent employees up, people from throughout the state were able to participate. And then likewise, we held them here at our fire station and our, our training center. And we were able to scrub all of our costs. So the instructor costs were, were zero for us because we were able to get individuals from other prior departments to come in and pay really the, the instructor fees. So we're really thrilled about that. We developed that two-year training plan. We've also migrated all of our training into an electronic, uh, system that, that we've had for several years, but we haven't really been utilizing it to its fullest, uh, fullest extent and bringing Mike in. Mike's been able to do that and we've been happy about that. We've also looked at how we can expand the, the use of our, our apparatus and primarily medic rescue one. So many times now we're splitting, uh, truck ones response with medic rescue one to keep the ladder truck, uh, off the streets and the wear and tear and the cost of maintenance and having our medic rescue, uh, run in the community. Um, we've also looked at the opportunity moving forward in the future, um, dealing with our transient and our homeless population. You know, is there some, is there some value in our medic rescue working with a social worker and a law enforcement officer for the ability for us to respond to those low acuity, um, uh, incidents uh, that, that, you know, that, that, that transient individual, that individual may benefit by having a medical professional there to do some basic wound care, render some care to them and then help them make better decisions on their medical needs that they may have. So, um, that's something that's, that's also ongoing. We've looked at our, uh, how we can prevent our injuries. So workman's comp has really been something that's, uh, that's, uh, been over our head for several years. This year we implemented a functional fitness and screening program. We in- invested a, a forty thousand dollars into that program and we've had really great success in, in the musculoskeletal type injuries have been, you know, I want to knock on wood, but they've been zero up to this point. Um, we've really seen a, a nice benefit with that. C J P I A has been thankful and they've been monitoring the program. This year they're actually going to provide some funding and they're going to, they're going to be doing some, uh, filming of what we're doing and their, the intent is to actually carry it to other, other fire departments in California. So we're kind of taking the lead in that area and we're really proud of that. And then, uh, you know, lastly, just, uh, you're continuing to try to bring certification type training here to generate, uh, to generate, uh, uh, revenues for our organization through training. As we know that, you know, we're in a fiscal health response plan, you know, we, we don't generate a lot of revenues in the fire department. And so, you know, how, how can we offset some of our training costs? And that's one of the things that we're looking at. And so moving forward, you know, we're going to continue on with those strategies that have not been completed from the first two years as well as the, the new, uh, twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, uh, strategies. Um, and then also part of the plan, it's, it's a five-year plan with really a three-year look back. So after, you know, at the three-year mark, looking at you, do we need to adjust any of our strategies? Has there been changes? We know we've got some revenue challenges. We've got diversity, inclusion. We've got some training coming up for that. Uh, we've been doing, we've been looking at, you know, what that might look like, uh, moving forward. In the next six months, we'll really be spending some time on that. And part of that also will be, uh, doing a comprehensive, uh, self-assessment of our organization to help drive, you know, the improvement of our, of our strategic plan. And our intent would be to bring new strategies moving forward, uh, this time next year. So with that, I know that was a snapshot. I talked really fast. Hopefully I didn't go too quickly. Um, but it's now, I'm, I'm put it back to you. If there's any questions or comments that you may have, uh, that I can answer for you.
Thank you so much, chief. Um, can you talk a little bit about, can you just expand on the nexus of COVID and wildfire season and what the expectation is if people have to evacuate? And, uh, physical distancing that might be required and the challenge of all of that? Just like, I know we're late, but like super briefly about that?
Yeah, so just two things really quickly. So we have been working with Red Cross. Our Red Cross representative is actually coming out of, uh, Santa Barbara area, which is not ideal. But we've had discussions with her on, on the different sites. So they've leveraged several locations in our city that they have the ability to open up a, an evacuation center. We can also open up the Ludwig Center in the event that we need to do that. So at the Ludwig, we can easily screen and bring people in. However, there's still just a huge challenge and there's, there's also, um, uh, so one of the biggest challenges is, is, is getting those folks there and, and having that separation. And it's based on the size of evacuation that we use and how many shelters that we need to open up that Red Cross can support and we can support as an E O C. If we have to evacuate any area, that'll automatically cause us to open up our E O C. So that'll be an automatic to get our E O C open so that we can address that. Um, very, very challenging. You know, the other thing I would say is that a bigger challenge for the fire service statewide is because of COVID, a lot of our hand crews, so our Cal Fire, um, uh, convict crews, so to speak, um, are being shut down. They're, they're being locked down in Northern California. I think they're down to seventeen crews right now and they're starting to get the extended fires up in that Northern California. So very problematic, very concerning to the fire service, very concerning to us. And then also when you have those major fires and we're opening up these base camps, it's how we're briefing, how we're sleeping, how we're feeding all of our personnel as well. So it is a significant challenge. A lot of effort has been put into, uh, the plans on how we'll do it on the fire side. Um, in terms of working with Red Cross, we've had conversations. They have a plan in place, but it's really all predicated on how big of a space that we can get, we can utilize. And another concern is that we're, you know, our stage, we're still the stage two opening is that fifty people is really the max that they can take per, per facility. And if we have a big evacuation, we could easily do a thousand people, which thus would be about twenty facilities and that, that is very problematic. So it's a challenge.
So thank you for that context. Is there anything that we could or should be doing as a council or, or maybe even as individual community members to establish a network of support in light of all of those challenges and likelihood that we might have a wildfire? What can be, be doing as a community on the upfront to ensure the best outcome with all of these unusual challenges?
Yeah, and, and it's, it's really unique. I think that the number one and most important thing for any of our community members is having a plan. Having an initial plan, that whole ready, set, go, but having a plan because part of that plan is not necessarily evacuating to shelter. It's determining if you have a friend, a family member, a, a coworker that you may be able to go to and go to and stay at their residence, at, at, at their home uh, in the event that you get evacuated and having that, that person. If you can leverage that relationship in advance, that really is going to make a, a difference on the burden of those shelters when we have to open them up. You know, for just those that, that simply have no place to go, it will really lessen that. So that would be my, my, my primary recommendation, you know, right now. Beyond that, I think we've done a pretty good job and it's something that we'll continue to monitor and, and give feedback on.
Okay, so as individual council members, the most impactful thing we can do right now in this moment is to encourage people to have a plan.
Have a plan.
Got it.
You, go, get that ready, set, go. Download that, don't, download that checklist and, and abide by it. It really is helpful.
Super. Thank you, chief. A council member, please.
Uh, thank you for that and thanks for the great work. I just, I always love seeing the creativity and, and kind of just rethinking how we do things like the e-bike or the medic rescue, um, approach. That's, that's awesome. I, uh, just a quick question on the, um, response time and the goal in the report. You talk about one of the reasons behind not being able to achieve your goal, which, uh, you know, is obviously ambitious. Um, or, you know, you set a high bar for yourselves, which we appreciate. But talk about, um, traffic congestion and construction. And I'm wondering if there's, um, if there's issues with like cars not pulling to the side when there's a siren. Do we need to, or construction that isn't, um, you know, is kind of sprawling out a little? Is there any work we need to do as a community to improve? Um, you know, other than just general con- uh, congestion relief, which we're working on in other ways, but.
Yeah, you know, it, it, so I, I absolutely hold some responsibility. Last year we were at seventy six percent, you know, and I made comment to, uh, Mike when Chief Al Fork came, when he came in. That, you know, we really need to look at our turnout times, how quickly that, from dispatch to getting in the rig, what that looks like. And it really is that, that, that response time itself. And so, you know, we set a high bar, but the fire service in general looks at that ninety percent. Um, you know, four, four-minute response time, ninety percent. And generally speaking, with minimal traffic, we can get to about ninety percent of the areas. There's a few areas out where that Avila Ranch is being built that, you know, that are going to be beyond that, that timeframe. You know, so when we, when we got the, when we got the actual numbers and started to really dive down, I was taken back that I thought we had actually improved and to see that we brought was disappointing. And so we started to look at, what do we attribute it to? Was, you know, it, I think it's less, I think people are very respective and they do pull to the side as best they can. In the downtown quarter, we do have some really tight streets. Uh, sometimes we can get bottlenecked up with, uh, you know, when, when you've got, uh, uh, traffic stuck at a, a light and things of that nature. Um, but generally speaking, we typically have a pretty good response time. And so really our focus will be this next year is trying to determine why we've, why we've increased. I mean, if it's just simply that we have more people in the community and we can tie that to it, um, then that's great. I, I would tell you in the last hundred and twenty nine days since we've had our E S C, E O C opened up and we've been addressing COVID, I think our response times have increased because we've just had, I mean, in the morning, when I come to work, I'm getting to work two or three minutes early because there's just less traffic in town. So, you know, it, we're going to, we're going to continue to look at it and, and, and see if there's anything spec, you know, specific that we can address or if it's something that's outside of our, uh, uh, outside of our control and communicate that back. In terms of the, the council, you know, the council's been very supportive of the fire department. We're, and we are very appreciative of that. And, and, uh, you know, it's, it's really us trying to look at how we can do a better job. And a big part of it is that, is that quick response time, is that quick response time? Because that's what our community is asking of us.
Thanks. Okay, I'm not seeing any other commenters. Um, is there a public, is there a public comment?
I have a comment. Sorry, I just couldn't find my mute button. Um, thank you very much. After putting together the roadmap for my current job, this, uh, I have even more um, appreciation for you putting this together. Um, I, as far as the response time, that kind of just to add on to that, you did mention though, we still have one of the best response times in the county. Do you know statewide, um, statewide, how far off we are from the average or what that looks like?
You know, I, I don't know statewide. Uh, I, we have the best in the county. I do know that. And in relationship, I'd use Past Robles is like, was forty two percent before they put their squatting. So I know we're considerably, uh, better than the, uh, the allied agencies around us. And one of the benefits is that we do have a smaller footprint and we have four stations, you know, located in, 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 in really good locations for the most part. Um, when, uh, when we look at statewide, it's hard to tell because it depends if it's a metro department, like, like-sized departments, um, Santa Maria, uh, Salinas, Santa Barbara, for example, they're, they're, they're in the sixty, seventy percent range. I want, I know that, uh, Santa Maria, I think was sixty three percent. Um, I can confirm that. I know they were a little bit below us. They just put another unit into service though, um, because their demand for calls though is almost twice as many as ours out of five stations. So they're, they're a pretty busy organization. Um, they provide a B L S service, but they're a pretty busy, busy organization.
Got it, thank you.
But yeah, no, it's not a, a great answer. And I, 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 I promise you next year, we're going to, we're going to really drive down and be able to give you more specifics as to the why. Because ultimately, it, ultimately, it may be something outside of our, you know, outside of our control.
Got it, thank you. And then, um, looking at the transient, um, trash and cooking fires, um, obviously we saw a pretty, um, giant increase. Is that consistent across the county, across similar cities?
Yeah, so actually last year we had thirty nine fires. This year we had twenty six. So I don't know why it showed us an increase. It actually should have been a, a decrease. Um, but again, I think it's, it's what, it's what was reported. So countywide, I think we've seen an uptick across the board countywide. Um, probably the most, the, the comparable would be Paso. They've got about, uh, two hundred and ten campsites in the riverbed. They're getting a lot of fires and obviously they had that, the recent, uh, river fire that got out. They lost some structures from, and, and that is, that is, that is my biggest fear for our community is that we get a fire that gets out of the creek or gets, you know, that, that started, gets out, gets into some structures and we've got wind behind it and that becomes that big conflagration. It's super incredibly difficult to control. And, and that was a little bit of what Paso experienced on a very minor stage is they had alignment with the, with the wind, with the fire, with the topography and that fire ran really rapidly faster than they could get in front of it. So, you know, we need to continue to monitor that. It's, it is working with, we, we've been much more successful working with PD. Um, but it is, it's getting the public to report the fires. Because even as we drive through and we check certain areas without getting in the, the creeks and walking the entire creek, we're not knowing where, where these fires are at. And there's a combination of reasons. Some people are simply cooking food, they're using it for warmth, they're using it for reading, et cetera. Um, you know, but nonetheless, we, we want to eliminate that. And ideally, if we could get them out of the creeks, that, that's, that's the best case scenario.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, doesn't look like anyone has any comments. City clerk, are there any speakers?
No, there are not.
Okay, well, this is a receiving files, so we don't need to take a vote. So thank you so much, chief. Thank you for all of that. This is obviously a very challenging time on every level. So thank you for all the good work that you and your team are doing. We all really appreciate it. And I have a ton of notes here, but I am a big circle on encouraging the community to make their own plan and check out ready, set, go and get themselves prepared for what may be inevitable. So thank you all so much. And then with that.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, chief. Um, we will move on to liaison reports and communications if anyone has anything. Uh, council member, please. Uh, Councilmember Pease.
Uh, thanks. Just briefly, wanted to say that, um, the, um, uh, the rail, uh, it's LoSan, which is the, uh, organization of, of all the, um, uh, trains from here south to, uh, I guess, at least, uh, through LA. Anyway, there's a lot of focus, uh, right now on a, uh, layover facility here in San Luis Obispo at the site of, of Roundhouse. And, um, we just spent, uh, there were three days of online, um, uh, workshop, design workshops, feedback, and staff was, uh, involved in a lot of that, and, um, I had, um, participated, dropped in to, um, as, uh, for my role on Slocog, and, um, and I was really impressed. I felt like there was a lot of, um, listening and really wanting to understand the needs of the community and increase the potential for us to have increased train service here in San Luis Obispo. So, um, some positive things. There's still, you know, a lot of work in progress, but we'll be, um, hearing more about the kinds of facilities there and what the, what that will physically look like. So we'll, we'll hear more in the future.
All right, seeing no other commenters, then we will, uh.
Hi, Erica.
There. I, I think it would be, just have to say, you know, DEI Task Force, the applications are open now. Um, I know people probably know this already, but just kind of highlighting that to come to the slowcity.org website, if you are interested in being on the task force, or if you know that someone that you know is interested as well. Thank you.
Say what DEI is.
Good point. Thank you so much. Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Task Force.
And what's the due date for applications?
I think it's August third.
I think so, too.
That's correct. It's August third at five o'clock.
Yeah. Perfect. Thank you.
Madam.
We only, there's only up to eleven people on that task force. I think we already have hundreds, and I know I've talked to so many people about their interest, and the task force is key, but everybody's voice is important. So keep sending your ideas, your concerns, all of it. It all matters. So do not think that the task force is the only place to make a difference on this, or any other issue for that matter. Yes, Derek?
The, the time on that, my apologies.
Pardon?
I was just going to share the, the time, uh, for the application, so my apologies.
Oh, no.
The application we do.
Oh, okay, great. Thank you for reaffirming that it's August third, I think, is what you're going to say. All right, then with that, we will adjourn. The next regular city council meeting is scheduled for Tuesday, August eighteenth, twenty twenty, at six PM, via teleconference. Thank you for everyone.
Yeah. Month off. All right, see you guys.
Thank you.
All right, bye, everybody.
Bye.